You're on record.
Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6, that's the section of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, please call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Toskowitz.
Here.
Mr. Kaplan.
Here.
Mr. Mozzarella.
Here.
Mr. Ready.
Present.
Chairman Iwakane.
Present.
We also have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
President.
Our board engineer, Mr. Holloway, and our board attorney, Mr. King.
Start off with the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, universal, liberty, and justice for all.
At this point in this evening's meeting, is there any person that has business to be brought to this board that is not on this evening's agenda? Hear none and see none. I guess we'll go right into the agenda, right?
This is the special.
This is the special.
It's really special, yeah, yeah. Application 22:58, Lee Outdoor Advertising, Mr. O'Neill.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Joseph O'Neill, Garrett Fallow and O'Neill, and Ruggiero, here on behalf of Lee Outdoor Advertising. With the permission of the board, we'd like to get right to it, given that it's a special before your regular meeting. I'd like to go ahead and get the engineering testimony started, if that's all right.
I will address one item, though, regarding the billboard set for 80 Masabook Road.
We are modifying the billboard to reduce the height down to 65 feet from the exhibit you have in your package. Can you hear me?
Sixty-five. Yeah. What was it, Joe? What was it proposed?
Eighty.
Eighty to sixty-five.
Yes, it was eighty. Now it's reduced to sixty-five. I'd like to go ahead and have the witness sworn.
Raise your right hand, sir. You swore a firm testimony about to give before the board, so yourself you got.
I did.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Sure. It's William R. Vought, Jr. It's V as in Victor, O, G like girl, T like top.
And you're engineer?
Uh, yes.
All your licenses are in full force and effect?
Yes, they are.
And you've been qualified before this board or other boards?
I have. I have before my, presented before your board a few years ago for NJM.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, the witness is sworn and qualified.
Thank you. Mr. Vought, could you go ahead and describe the application here this evening?
Good evening. We're here before you for a proposed off-premise multi-message advertising sign located at 80 Masabook Road. It's found on Lot 2, Block 735. It's found on your tax map 167, and it's in the COD, which is the corporate office district. The set of plans I have here are the site plans that were submitted, C-01 through C-04, with a date of 7/5/2022. Do you want me to mark those?
Was it part of the application?
Uh, yes.
Okay. You don't have to, unless you're an attorney.
So just, I have a, I have an aerial image, just to give the board members a better idea of where the property is located.
That you'll get marked. That's going to be Exhibit A1 for this evening?
So A1 is just an aerial image of the existing property. I have it highlighted in red. North is to the right-hand side of the page. We have frontage along the north side, along Route 80, but the property is accessed off of Masabook Road. It's somewhat of a triangular-shaped property. Our driveway, again, comes in off of Masabook Road. And again, this is a existing commercial facility. It's a fuel oil.
Oil company.
Oil company, correct. They store their vehicles there. They just have basically a, looks like a single-family home with some head-in parking, and there's parking in the back for some of their work vehicles. What I'll do is, I'm just going to switch to, I have a color rendering of the site plan, so I'll mark that as A2.
A2 for this evening?
A2 is just a color rendering of the site plan, Sheet C-02, same date, 7/5/2022. The proposed billboard is, is being located approximately 220 feet back from the property line along Masabook. It's directly going to be facing traffic along Route 80 in the east-west direction. It's a V-shaped digital board, so it's, it's not static, it's a digital board. It's, the size of it is 14-foot tall by 48-foot in, in width. That's a standard size for a billboard. And it's V-shaped. The board flares out at the back, so it directly faces the traffic that the message is, is presented to along Route 80. The height that we originally submitted it at was 80 feet. We're reducing that to 65 feet tall. What we also were going to do is, we may even have the opportunity to widen the V on the board to 25 feet, so that it's further in direct view of Route 80. The, the existing sign does require some variances. The sign is, it's, it's not a permitted sign in, in this district. It exceeds the area. The, the sign area for the zone is 64 square foot. We are 14 by 48, which is 672 square feet. The total sign height is 10 feet. We're at 65 feet. The maximum sign width of one side is 15-foot. We're at 48. And the minimum setback to the property line is 20 feet, and we're at 10. And that is measured 10 feet, and that's closest to Route 80. Overall, that is, that is the application that we have for you, for the proposed billboard on the site.
So I'd summarize, not only are we reducing the height, but we're widening out the sign to 25 feet?
That's correct.
Thank you. No further questions for this question.
Would you like to lower it?
Yeah, that was my question.
We lowered it. Our state permit allows us to go up to, I believe it's maybe even in excess of, of 80 feet. But we can have good visibility of the sign at a lower height, and it wouldn't be interfering with any of the trees that are there.
And what does the V do? What, what do you?
So the V, so if you had a sign that was back-to-back.
Uh-huh.
Okay? It would, it would face not directly towards the traffic. So what we do is, we widen the sign out, so that the passersby on Route 80 from both directions have a 90-degree angle to the sign face.
And Mr. Boyd, isn't it true that when you widen the sign out, you're obviously angling it more to the roadway, makes it less visible behind the sign after a certain, like your TV at home, when you get to the side of it, it actually, you can't see?
Correct. So with the widening, that helps us with the visual angle of the sign. So the sign, this manufacturer, they build these signs with louvers on, on each one of their diodes that make up the rows of the sign, the lights of the sign. So those diodes with the louver, they block all the light at a 60-degree angle from the, from the sign. So by us widening the back to 25 feet, increasing the angle towards the roadway, in addition with the louvers that are installed on the sign, we cut off any viewing angle beyond 60 degrees of the sign.
So if I'm standing next to the sign, like this, that's zero degree?
Correct.
And I can't see any light coming from the sign? I can't see the message on the sign?
Correct.
And it's not till I get to about 60 degrees?
Well, 30 degrees out from zero.
Thirty degrees out.
So are the people at Care 1, are they able to see the sign?
The people at Care 1, our planner does have some visuals for that. We believe that there, there may be one, one section of the building that may have visibility of the, of this, of the sign.
So that means every?
Sign, but not the message.
Did you submit any of this in graphic form?
I believe Mr. Re, done.
I'm talking about the louvers, the angles, and how it would present itself to the joint in property.
No, I have not.
Is that, I didn't catch the date. What date is that, the exhibit?
The exhibit is, it's the same date as the site plan, 7/5/22.
Just to, I just want to follow up on the height question. There was a reason you went out at 80 at first. Why did you do that? So what, I'm really more interested in what are you losing by dropping to 65, and why did you go out at 80 at first?
Well, Mr. Kaplan, as you know, the higher the sign, the more visibility you're going to get down the road. But this is generating a variance for the height, so it was revisited to see what would, what would be the lowest point you would still have an effective sign. You know, we don't want to come in and say, a sign has to be 80 feet, and then someone asks the question, well, what happens at 70? We don't want to be saying it still works, because now we can't justify the variance.
So 65 is the minimum, so whatever your calculator, however you figure that out, 64 is, you're going to start losing the impact of the sign?
Right, because of the tree lines.
Yep.
Because of the angle to the roadway. I mean, there is, as you can see from A1, a substantial amount of vegetation along the side of the road, so you do have to be up above that. And the analysis my client conducted said 65 feet is the minimum height that the sign will effectively work at, which is why we reduced it down to 65. It's really just as simple as that. Going back, looking at the variances again, looking at what would be the most effective sign, so we reduced it down as much as we could.
Okay. Second question. I don't know if that's the right map to do it, or if someone else is, maybe Mr. McDonnell's going to do it. Can you point out where the closest residential is to the sign, and also just point out where Care 1 is?
You can see it on A1, right?
Sure. On, on A1, directly across the street would be Care 1. And then any other residential on, on our side of Route 80 would be farther down at the intersection of Masabook and?
Jefferson Road.
Yes.
Across the highway, that's a construction yard, you could probably see that across from the sign there. Across the street from that, there are still some residential houses.
Yeah. Will they be able to see the sign? Right, or not at all?
Mr. McDonnell will address it.
And will he address?
The temples across.
Yes.
Will he also address the Care 1?
He will. He's going to, just to give you a quick preview, Care 1 is kind of in a hole. There's a giant retaining wall along the, the back. So the Care 1 facility, John will get into it, but you're not going to be able to see it.
Okay. I'll wait for him. But yeah, just, just to give you a, I guess, an overview from a site plan, this, the building on the right-hand side.
Yeah.
This, this building is sunken. It's, it's lower, it's much lower than Masabook.
So my concern is, I understand that they might not see what the sign says, but every time it changes, the light change could affect them if they're on that back road? It will not?
No, it's a.
It will not. Mr. McDonnell will get to that.
Okay.
But I want to be careful. I don't want to say you can't see the sign.
Understood.
Structure, as you can.
Yes. Structures one thing, lights another.
Message is something else.
Okay.
Mr. McDonnell will.
Thank you.
And also, if you can explain the impact driving the people on the Baldwin Road, that bridge, the bridge.
The one over. We're going to leave that to Mr. O'Neill.
Just to.
I, I believe you said there was a house there with, where the oil company is? There's a, a single-family home?
No, no, that's their office. No, their office. It appeared, it, its appearance looks like a, like a home, like a residential structure.
We're positive nobody lives in that home?
We are positive. Yes.
Can you explain those? Well, first, you're going to widen the angle. Which portion of the sign gets spread out?
Sure. The, if, if you look at the site plan, there's a dimension along the rear of the sign.
Yes.
At 20 feet. That's going to go to 25.
Okay. Which, and it'll be split apart equal?
Correct.
Not one side more?
No, you get 12 and 1/2 on each side.
And this, I forgot what you call it?
Louver.
Wings or barrier?
Louver.
Louvers. What are they? Just like some kind of material?
Sure. So when you, when you look at the board, okay, it's made up of three clusters of diodes. There's a red, green, and blue diode, and there's many rows of them that make up the sign. If you picture that as a square, on the outside of the square, there's a, there's a louver that sticks out. It's not very big, maybe inch and a half. It's not very big.
Like a flange around the diode.
These, these diodes are very small, so it, it just sticks out, you know, an inch, inch or so, and that blocks the light emanating forward from, from those diodes.
On the 30-degree?
At, at 60 degrees, it's a full cutoff.
Can you mark on that, that plan, what 60-degree view line would be?
Sure. I actually had it for you, so I'm just going to show you. That's 60 degrees.
So anything to the left of the scale, you couldn't see it?
Correct.
Anything to the right, which would be the facility across the street, you will see it?
If you, if you have a viewing angle of it, remember, it's 60, you know, it's, it's 40, 48 feet to the bottom of the sign now, with 65 in height. So it's, if, if you have a clear vantage point of it, you, you would see it between zero, zero and 60 degrees.
Mr. Boyd, does this dim at night?
Yes, that's a good question. So during the day, the sign is competing with the sun, so it's at full output. At nighttime, it dims to, and it only uses 3% of its output. Okay? So it's very similar to either your smartphone, or your dashboard in your car, your GPS in your car, and when it goes into a nighttime mode, your eyes don't need a lot of light to read a message. And that's the intention of the board. It just, the board just needs enough light emitting from the light, from the, from the surface to present the message to the viewing. It's, the sign is not meant to project light or trespass light beyond, beyond the limits of the sign, and the, has little to no impact at the ground level, because the ambient light is much greater than any of the light emanating from the sign at the nighttime levels. And the sign is all programmed. It has programmed with whatever time of the year it is. It also has photo cell, photo cells on it that it automatically dims according to what time of year it is, and if there's inclement weather. So there's, there's, there's two, I would say, nighttime provisions automatically programmed into this sign. And then the sign has a camera on both sides that views the sign for a couple of reasons. It, it tells the, it tells the main board that's, that's monitoring the system 24/7, 365 a year, if there's any problems with the board, if it's out, if it's malfunctioning for some reason. And it also gives proof to the customers that they are getting their advertisements on the board as well.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd.
Any other questions of this witness? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness? Hear none, see none.
Thank you. Mr. McDonnell?
Thank you.
So you raised your right hand, you swore a firm testimony about to give before the board, so yourself you got?
I do.
And for the record, you state and spell your name?
Sure. Hi there, everyone. My name is John McDonnell. It's spelled M-C capital D-O-N-O-U-G-H.
And your testimony to be planning?
I'm the project planner.
And your, all your licenses are in full force and effect?
Yes, they are.
And you've provided testimony before this board and other boards in the state of Jersey?
Yes, I have.
Mr. Chairman, the witness is sworn and qualified.
Mr. McDonnell, you're fully familiar with the application here before the board?
Fully, yes.
You've had an opportunity to examine the local ordinances and master plans?
Yes, I have.
I wonder if you can compare the impact of this application of those documents?
Sure thing. We prepared a planning report that sort of outlays the planning rationale behind this application. The positive aspects of billboards as a form of communication and constitutional free speech are well-recognized and well-documented. That's going to go towards the positive criteria. We put them in the report. I can certainly elaborate on that. The key consideration with this land use, which is technically a functionally benign land use, is not a land use that generates any traffic, that generates any population density, that doesn't generate any noise, or generate any runoff or the like, it generally sign on a stick or a communication device on a, on a, on a pole. So visual impact is usually the primary concern, and we look at the surrounding land use context, the view angles, the distance, what I'll call saturation in terms of the area, and what one may see from particular vantage. So what we did was prepare a set of exhibits, just to give the board some orientation. There were questions about Care 1, there were questions about adjacent residential uses, so we'll give these handouts to the board.
Let's mark this as A3 for this evening?
And I'll wait till it gets handed out, but A3 for the record are just going to be three sheets. One will be an aerial drone view, sort of a top-down view, just to give you a sense of spatial characteristic and the positioning of the sign on the site, and then there'll be two ground photographs that I personally. So we'll start with the first sheet, which is a view of the subject site, showing the sightline from the Care 1 facility. Bear in mind, before I jump into this particular view shed, just some of the site characteristics that you've heard about. This is a property that's identified as a single tax lot. As you've heard, it's developed with a fuel business, and you can see the fuel trucks there. You can see the building on the subject parcel. There were also some storage sheds there as well. The sign is going to go in the back portion of the property, in that V configuration, where one of the faces would face Route 80 going eastbound, another would face Route 80 going westbound. And as opposed to a side-by-side configuration, we open it up so that it is angled relative to the back. Just heard about the current proposal is 20 feet, and expanding it to 25 feet, will, which will lessen the degree of visibility from the Care 1 facility. And the first line that I struck here is from the portion of the Care 1 facility, which we know is a senior living facility. I would qualify it as a, the nearest residential facility. That is approximately 520 feet away, which is a substantial distance in terms of visibility and visual impact. But we took the wing of the building that would be associated with either the independent living or the assisted living, but not the memory care component, which is actually going to be further up in this photograph, or closer to Route 80. And I did give you some ground photographs of those vantages as well. The main point here is the line of sight from the Care 1 units that are closest to the sign, again, are offset by string distance, and also by orientation. While one may see visibly a portion of the sign face, bearing in mind, as you've heard this evening, with the narrow view technology, much like the TV analogy that Joe used, you're seeing the black part of the screen. As we work our way towards that 60-degree, that's where the visibility of the sign comes into play. And as we open up the sign, the impact of that visibility becomes even lesser. Then we add on these louvers on the side as well, which further reduces the visual impact. So given distance, given orientation, and given the technology itself and the innovations that go with this land use, that sign will not be visual, visible from a significant visual impact standpoint from the Care 1 facility.
John, a question, if you don't mind? So this picture on page three, you're showing the street level, so if you look out, the trees are higher than you could, than you?
Yes, and I just don't, I don't want to deceive the board.
Yeah, right.
That, those next two pictures that I was going to jump into are not from the line of sight that I have.
Okay.
That is a clear line of sight through the parking lot, but again, it's a clear line of sight through the back of the sign, not the front of the sign. So towards the question of whether one would see the change in light?
Right.
The answer is no, because of that narrow view technology and the backfill that's going to be.
So you're, you're stating clearly that if you're on the second floor of Care 1, in the, in the units that would be clearest to able to see the sign, they will not see the light change?
With those mitigative measures, that's correct. Okay?
No. Let me just clarify.
We asked the engineer, you put the scale up on to give which side you could see, which side you couldn't.
Right.
And the side, the, the open side of, the right side of the scale was where the billboard was?
Yes, that would be the right-hand portion, or from this vantage point, if north is straight up, that would be the eastern-facing sign. Again, yes, you would see the physical object, but in terms of the message display, given the backfill, and given the, the narrow view technology, the darkening of the image, you will not see that, that illumination change.
What about when it's foggy?
And it's, you know, there are nights when it's cloudy, and I live along 46, so I see the lights on 46. Even though I live on the other side of 13 acres of woods, on cloudy, foggy nights, I see the Porsche dealership lights up in the clouds, I see Whole Foods lights up in the clouds. You can see it. So what I'm concerned about is the rotation, those residents who are dementia patients seeing that rotation of the lights and the projection into the fog, or clouds, or snow, or whatever it is. And, and the reason I'm, I'm particularly concerned about that is, there is research that clearly shows that lights aggravate dementia patients. So I just want to make sure that the applicant has considered all of that.
Again, importantly here, the line of sight that I've drawn on the first page is not from the dementia wing, from the.
Okay.
Memory care wing. We're going to get to that next. This, this would be from the independent or the assisted living unit?
But if it's cloudy?
Let's get through that.
If it's cloudy, will they, will you see the reflections off the clouds and the fog, which happens quite a bit?
If this were a static sign, this is one of the benefits of digital over, over the older static signs, which had the halogen lights, the floodlights facing up, you would get what we call the stadium effect, the sky glow effect. That doesn't happen with this technology here.
Okay.
This is a pointed directional type of sign, that's what these LED signs are. And again, without having the actual evidence, the videos show that from this angle, from this vantage point, the sign is dark, the sign is black.
Okay.
Somebody said there's a second story on, did somebody say there's a second story on Care 1?
Yes.
Is there? Yeah, there is a second.
Yes. In fact.
Those are the assisted living units.
Those are the assisted living units, yes.
The building that's kind of down in the hole that someone was describing, that's the dementia unit.
That's the memory care, and.
And the memory care would be shown on picture three?
And picture two.
Picture two shows them as well?
So what I did was walk from where you see, in picture two, I walked from where we showed the line of sight, and I walked more towards the north, towards the memory.
Picture three shows the, the jewel landscaping along. Picture 3 shows the jewel landscaping along the road.
That's the point. The reason why I showed picture 2 is to show that there is a building there, and if this were a desert, there are no windows on that side in terms of the memory care. So even if you could see the sign, you can't see the sign because there are no windows facing the sign from this building. Now, this building is sunk in a hole, as Joe said, it's sunk in a bowl. And if you were to walk up from here onto Mazda Brook, and you can see the wall in the back of photo number 2, if you stand on Mazda Brook, my back is to the sign right now, I'm looking down at the building with my own two eyes, I could not see the building from this vantage point or the sign from down in frame number 2, where there are no windows anyhow.
I do want to just interrupt you here, John, just to make clear something Mr. Voight said, which may have been missed by the board. The diodes with the louvers, the way that works is the diode is basically an assembly that sits in a box with a flange all the way around. So the louvers affect it side to side and up and down. And the idea for reflecting it up and down is to keep that light pollution that Mr. Kaplan is describing from bouncing. Now, I mean, if it's foggy, if it's foggy, there's nothing you can do. If it's right in front of the sign, it's going to light up the fog. But the idea is to keep that light pollution to a minimum, that you cannot get that reflection that you're describing that you see from old shopping centers. So that's the purpose of the flange, the louvers.
And the way I like to think of it is like a traffic light has a little cup or cone around it, so you don't see the light from the side. It's the same thing.
Mr. Chadwick, you seemed a little...
No, I understand.
You're okay?
Yes. I think we should have cleaned up one thing. There was an issue about the wetlands boundary, and you didn't comment on it. It's not shown on your exhibit as yet. You've got verification, the wetlands boundary is where you presented it, correct?
Yes, that's correct. I presented that memo to your office, that we had the wetlands mapped out at the site, and they are identified on the survey and on the sightline. And I did put the...
Are they shown on the date of the sightline that you used? I don't think they are. That's why I just brought it up.
The wetlands are actually all off the property.
Oh, they're shown, okay.
That's off the property here, and it has a 50-foot transition area. So we're outside of that 50 feet.
So my concern is a little bit, Topgolf is going across the street, right?
Kind of.
Kind of.
Kind of.
And we're just...
Way's up.
Way's up. My concern is that we're starting to light up a lot of the area.
Well, you're already lighting it up. You've got office parks there. You've got older shopping centers. So we'll, Topgolf, we'll address, because they've got exhibits about what the question is here, about light spillage off the site. But Topgolf will not affect this at all. It's down, way down, Baldwin Road, it's the bridge right there, bottom left, A1. And it continues down. You've got Smithfield, which is much more of a light event than certainly this, or I would even propose Topgolf is going to be. And then you get the Topgolf after Smithfield going down 46 to the east. But that's not going to affect anybody here.
So looking, I see the diagram shows where it won't affect Care 1, but will the light from the sign hit that office or house at night?
On the property?
Yeah.
The only thing I'll say is that building owner is co-apparent here, is the applicant.
Okay.
One question is, suppose somebody driving on Baldwin Road over the bridge and rotating. So what is the distance between the sign to the bridge there, and what is the impact of driving the people, the signage? Do you understand?
I do. I'm going to measure that.
More pass, yeah.
So the distance from the proposed sign to the overpass is approximately 1,000 feet.
So what type of shape, any shade comes on the people so that they lose the driving sense and look at the sign, anything like that, incoming or outgoing?
I'm not aware of any studies or conclusive evidence that that would cause driver distraction.
But you can't see it, that's true.
Then that's fine. Can't see, that's good.
There was a comment, you would not see the sign if you're driving over Baldwin...
No, I said the opposite. You would see the sign.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I misunderstood.
I'm sorry. I said you would see the sign. Mr. McDonough, you have some more testimony, of course?
Just to close out, just to give the board a recap of what the applicant is asking the board to move on and to help Mr. King with the resolution here. The relief being sought is from the COD Corporate Office District. We're looking at two forms of D1 use relief. One is to allow a sign type that's not permitted in the zone, an off-premises sign is not permitted in the COD zone. And also, D1 use relief to allow a second principal use on the property. You have the fueling facility, and now you'll have the second use, which would be this off-premises sign. I would also say, because the fuel business is non-conforming, this is, even though it's not interfering with the fuel business use, it is altering a non-conforming use, so the board may move on D2 relief as well. My report talked about D6 height relief to exceed the 69 feet maximum permitted in the zone, but as you've heard this evening, that goes away to now 65 feet. So it's the two D1s and the D2. With that said, on the positive side, we'll just go through quickly some of the things in the report as to the benefits of this land use. It's been recognized as beneficial on several layers of government, including on the federal level. We've got the U.S. Supreme Court in the Metro Media versus San Diego case that found that this would be a hindrance of free speech, or that his use promotes free speech, non-commercial messages, promotes economic development, is an instrument of business, and also promotes institutional uses like schools and hospitals and the like. Emergency services are the benefit of real-time messaging that comes with this digital display. The site is suitable for the use because the use follows the highway. Route 80 is a 10-lane freeway, so it logically goes there. And that would promote purposes of the land use law A, G, and M. I think we've given you all the reasons why the negative criteria are satisfied here, no interference with the use that's there, and no visual or functional impacts with the surrounding land uses as well.
And it is true that our client has offered to provide messages for free municipality, for interested municipal groups. He's also provided free messages for governmental entities or emergency services. Those messages, no charge, will be provided on the sign.
In short, yes.
So I have no further questions for this witness, because I'm sure you feel that variances can be granted here. Say yes, John.
Oh, me? Yes. I thought you were asking the board.
If he wasn't sure, why should we?
It does bring up an interesting question.
John, I just wanted to verify that there is no residential use on this property, there's no apartment in that building that you know of?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Any questions of this witness?
I have one question, I know it was to John. The origin of the zone that this property is in came out of the second round of the Affordable Housing Plan. Are there any stipulations in that plan, although this property wasn't part of the settlement? It's in the zone. Is there anything in that zone? I looked at it, and I didn't see it. But I wasn't a participant in that process. I was an expert in terms of parts of the plan, but I was not part of the finalization of the certification.
I'm not aware of any conflict...
I think it's probably, we would need a condition that it is not in conflict with that second-round certification and the creation of that zone.
Affordable, do you know?
And that really would go to Mr. O'Neill to make sure he isn't...
I have no objection to that. That put in the report, I think it's been superseded, but...
Why?
The subsequent plan.
I think that that certification had 50 years of...
Oh, yeah. That's fine. That's fine. We agree to that stipulation.
I just, I hope we haven't wasted our time here.
No, we have not. That is not an issue. I will say, just to put a fine pointer, because Mr. King asked, Mr. Mazzarella asked, I have represented this property owner independently for about 20 years with my firm. And we have been surprised before by this client, but we have been assured here that there are no residential units in that building, and none are permitted, and none are part of this application. So no residential in that house.
Mr. Hall, do you have any questions?
No, I just, the engineer gave his testimony. Was there any acknowledgement of the engineering letter? Any questions regarding the comments in that letter?
Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given this evening?
We got to answer his question.
What question?
If he agrees to...
We agree to all comments. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what he said.
The highway department has a business? No issues with the highway department?
No issues with the highway department. The permit's already in hand. So we agree to all the conditions.
Are you willing to do the site demonstration?
No, we have not done the site demonstration.
Is that something you're willing to do? It's in his comments.
Well, we do not believe it is necessary, given the existence of a comparable sign here in town, which is running, and a perfect example of what it is we're talking about here this evening. I don't think that hanging a blank board in the sky will give the board a better representation of what the structure's going to look like when compared to an actual structure. So I do know, because we've done some other things regarding billboards, all of us, I do know that the board is familiar with that sign.
That's on 287, aren't you talking about?
Yes, sir, it is. And I would say... Is this the same company? It is not the same company, but it's the same type of sign.
Well, that one that was approved is one side. This is a double...
That is just one side, yes.
Any other questions? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given? I hear none, see none. You don't want to sum anything, you want to...
I appreciate it.
Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? Please come forward and testify yourself and get sworn in.
Raise your right hand, you swear a firm testimony you got to give before the board's truth, is the truth, so help you God. And for the record, can you state, spell your name, and give your address?
Frank Cahill, 90 East Halsey Road, Porcypany. I am on the Board of Directors of the Porcypany Area Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Chairman of the Porcypany Economic Development. I am in favor of this application because it is similar billboard on Route 287, who supports our town and gives us advertising to promote events and to promote small business within our town. Thank you.
Any questions of this witness? Anybody else want to speak in opposition or in favor of? No? Do we need a conference, or what?
I've got a couple of questions.
Okay. Motion to go into conference?
Motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, who wants to start?
Well, my questions are, before discussing the actual application, do we have to be careful on, we've had sign applications like this, where one we approved and one we turned down. So do we have to be careful what we say about how we deal with this in order...
Well, I think the extenuating circumstances on the one that...
Each application is different.
Each application is different.
And approvals are different.
That was a height situation.
And residential.
And residential that was within...
500 feet, maybe?
Yeah. So it's a totally different application.
And immediately adjacent office building.
And we had to raise the sign because of the office movement. And that's what caused all the trouble.
But what happens if one of our concerns is that we're just going to end up with a town of 50 signs eventually? And I'm concerned about that.
The proliferation is addressed somewhat within your DOT regulation. You can only put a static billboard within 1,000 feet, another one. And the digital have to be 3,000 feet separation, and they have to be 1,000 feet off the exit ramp for any interchange, and they have to be in a non-residential zone. So all the highways that we have running through town, all that frontage is not open to billboard after billboard. You know, it's not going to look like a Jersey strip, but...
Will not.
No.
Okay.
And they have a totally different set of rules out there, because they're in the Meadowlands Development District, and DOT rules don't apply.
Okay.
Do you have any other comments?
No.
Mr. Reddy, nothing? Any comments?
I just thought that should be brought out.
Yeah, I understand.
And made clear that we're doing this one at a time, and we're not opening up the door to get some sign sitting.
It's always been like that. Always, on all types of variances. Should we have a record? Mr. Kaplan?
I'm counting eight variances that are being sought here, and I'm just concerned that the totality of those variances, the negative impact will outweigh the positive impact, so I'm leaning no right now.
Mr. Purrie?
My main concern was the Care 1 facility, because that's in proximity of the sign, and that's probably the only location, only residential, I'd say, as far as, you know, property close to that sign. After hearing the, you know, experts, I think especially memory care portion of this building I was more concerned about. And after hearing the experts, I'm okay with it, and I'll be going...
You're okay?
Yes, yeah.
Mr. Mizell?
I'm going to echo what Mr. Kaplan asked about earlier, about hanging the signs just to see what it would look like there. I know we went through the other sign down the road, only being single-sided, but just seeing what it would look like in that position around it. And what you said about your client in previous situations, that still concerns me. As far as it being residential, someone living there...
The property owner?
Yes, 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 the property owner.
Let me just say that, I made all the proper representations here about that being an illegal use. And if someone is actually living there, they're going to have a really bad morning tomorrow when they get evicted for being an illegal occupancy. My client gets the privilege of paying for moving them out.
Okay, that's all I got.
So that's based on what I said.
Mr. Mizell, are you going to vote against the thing? Is that your plan?
That's yes. That's the way I'm leaning at the moment, yes.
Okay. Motion to come out of conference? Oh, wait a minute. Forgot me. Personally against these signs, but I can't let that influence my decision in this particular case, because I don't take personal things and carry them to my decisions on the board. I would vote in favor. It's an okay application. That's about it, all it is. It's an okay application.
Going back down the list.
So is, am I allowed to ask you? So is there a point down the road when someone comes up with an application 3,000 or 4,000 feet down the road, that you think you will say, you know what, it's getting to be a point where we're becoming a sign town? No, that's not the case.
Can't do that. I don't think we can do that.
You don't think we could do that?
I don't think we can do that, no.
Because that goes against kind of what Purrie was saying.
Okay. Every application is unique and has to be considered in its own merits and isolation.
Despite of these signs, I think they're distracting. I tend to, you know, try and look at the thing and what are they saying, and I'm driving along at 80 miles an hour, not 80 miles an hour, 70 miles an hour. 65, 65, Bob. I'm driving on Route 80, that's what I meant. And it just is, I'm trying to read the frigging sign, it changes.
Right. Right, but that's, so I had voted for the previous sign.
Yeah.
And that is one of the maybe regrets I've had, because I'm driving up 287, and I'm noticing that John Bramnik is the funniest lawyer in town. And then it changes and changes, and I realize, you know what, it is distracting.
Eight second intervals.
Yeah, I, I don't.
You know what I'm saying?
I don't, I don't think that's, that's, comes under our.
I, I, John, I'm just gonna comment. I've sat through and represented billboards for twenty-five years.
Mm-hmm.
And the studies that come out of the Chicago, basically, Institute of Traffic Engineering Studies cannot find any difference between highways with billboards and without them in terms of safety.
And we're one of the safest states in the nation. Did you know that?
I did not.
We're like number forty-five or something like that in safety.
And everybody, and everybody that's sat here comments what I do. I'm the same type, but the statistics don't bear it out.
Motion to come out of conference?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Second, Jaskowitz.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Someone like to frame a resolution of approval?
Do you have enough votes?
I counted only two, no. Were you a no?
No, I'm a yes.
Okay, Mr. Parek was a yes, right?
I'm a yes. You guys are both yeses. We got five guesses. That's what they need. Oh, okay.
Someone like to frame a resolution?
Come on, Ernie.
I move we grant the application, twenty-two colon fifty-eight, the outdoor advertising to be located at eighty Mazda Brook Road and Block seven thirty-five, Lot Two, in the COD Zone. Or preliminary, are we gonna go final now, too?
Yeah.
Go for final?
Uh, no, we should do preliminary and final would be the change of the shape of the.
Subject to the new plans.
So, we're just preliminary now?
The approval of preliminary and final, subject to revised plans.
All right, that's what, yeah.
All right, so, motion shall include approval of preliminary and final Midas Subplan, subject to dismissal of revised plans as testified to with the scene.
And there's this stipulation that it doesn't violate the shared, fair share.
And that's modified accordingly by our testimony. So be it.
I, I think the modification of the site plan should include the details of the maneuvers of how they fit on this sign.
We'll provide a catalog detail.
Critical to your testimony.
Yeah, we'll provide a catalog detail.
Whatever, yeah.
Do you have any second?
Second, Eddie?
Any discussion? Nora call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
No.
Mazzarella.
No.
Parek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Everything.
Yes, resulted, the variance is granted. Next time I take your word at thirty minutes, though, I gotta have my head examined.
Open your chair when you started ten minutes later.
Oh, God. Okay, let's adjourn this meeting. Motion to adjourn?
Well, so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. All right, you ready, Nora?
Hold on one second, I just want to, all right, you're on record, you're on record.
Okay, now we're gonna call the regular meeting for July twelfth. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and is being conducted in accordance with NJSA ten colon four dash six, that's the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Jaskowitz.
Here.
Mr. Kaplan.
Still here.
Mr. Mazzarella.
Here.
Mr. Parek.
Yeah.
Mr. Ready.
Pledges.
Shemiro Kane.
Still present.
Our Board Planner, Mr. Chapley.
Here.
Board Engineer, Mr. Holloway. Our Board Attorney, Mr. Kane.
Okay, uh, we'll, we'll pass on the pledge of allegiance to the last meeting. And at this point, if any member of the public has any business to be brought to this board that is not on this evening's agenda, hear none, see none. We have, oh, announcement, what is this? Application twenty-two thirty-two, Thomas Petrazello.
Yes, he was originally on to be heard tonight, and didn't, he went beyond his ten days of notice and a few, so we're gonna, he's going to notice again within a day.
So, we don't have to do anything? We don't have to go?
We don't have to do anything, but there may be people here because.
Is there anybody here for the Petrazello, application fifteen Lake Drive, application twenty-two thirty-two? Okay, so that's gonna be noticed, so we don't have to carry it.
Correct.
Okay, calendar. After many hours of blaming the innocent, praising the guilty, we have come up with a calendar, which Nora and I have both checked for all religious holidays, even for the Alaskan Eskimos, to make sure we have them covered, okay? And this, this calendar does not conflict with any of the religious holidays or any other holiday, any federal holiday. Any, any questions? Do you need time to study it, or can, can you take our word?
It had been sent out, the, the twelve-month version had been sent out to everybody.
Okay, oh, right, 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 the one we, we had done, you good?
I reviewed it.
Okay. Motion to accept the calendar for next year?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, takes care of the calendar. I'm gonna put that on my thing. Okay.
You might have knew all these by the time you.
I might have knew all these, that's right. You never know. Um, okay, uh, do, 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 resolutions. Who can vote? Twenty-two seventy-five, Berkowitz, Jaskowitz, Mazzarella, Parek, Ready, Shemiro Kane.
Everyone who's here, they crossed out Snyder and Willens, so everyone who's here, I'd.
Everyone here can vote for all of these?
No.
Oh, the last one, um.
Last one.
Jaskowitz, Mazzarella, Parek, Snyder.
Okay, can somebody move twenty-two seventy-five, twenty-three oh-one, and twenty-two eighty-one?
Jaskowitz moves.
I'm sorry, twenty-two seventy-five is separate from the next two.
Twenty-two seventy-five is separate?
Yeah.
Okay, somebody move twenty-two seventy-five.
So moved, twenty-two seventy-five.
Second, Eddie.
Any discussion? Nora call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Parek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Shemiro Kane.
Yes. Twenty-three oh-one, somebody move that one?
So moved.
Second, Jaskowitz.
Any discussion? Nora call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Shemiro Kane.
Yes. Twenty-two eighty-one.
So moved, Jaskowitz. Second, Eddie.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Parek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Shemiro Kane.
Okay. Twenty-two thirty-seven, somebody move?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Nora call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Shemiro Kane.
Yes. Okay, that takes care of that. Moving right along. Moving right along. Okay, uh, this is an application that was carried from April nineteenth, Robert Greenfield, one forty-five Lakeshore Drive, see variance to construct a detached garage.
So, raise your right hand, you swear a firm testimony you got to provide to the board is true to help you guide. For the record, you're Robert Greenfield.
Hi, yeah.
You're the owner of one forty-five Lakeshore Drive. Your sworn, please speak into the microphone. Mr. Chairman, this is sworn.
Okay, uh, seeking some variances. Accessory side yard, you want a half a foot, where six is allowed. Yards and courts, open deck, you want thirty-six point one eight, where twenty-four is allowed. Building coverage, twenty-eight point six eight, where twenty is allowed. Impervious coverage, forty-five seventy-three, where forty is allowed. You have a corner lot, which makes you have two front yards. And you're in the R4 zone, which I believe is six thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Six thousand square feet. And what do we have here?
Mr. Chairman, this, this, this one, if you remember, if, if there was a question about the size.
Oh, right, 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 right.
There was a business.
Yes, yes.
There was storage, so there's some prior testimony on.
Okay, yes, I do remember this. So, what do you, what'd you come back with?
So, as, as, at the request of the board, I reduced the total size by ten percent, going from forty feet long down to thirty-six feet.
Down to?
Thirty-six feet long.
Thirty?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six feet?
Yes. So, it's a ten percent reduction. Um, there also seem to be, the, the board seemed to be kind of stuck on the idea that I might be operating a business out of this structure. That's, it's not the case. This is purely for storage, along with the fact that I'm still gonna be using this as a shed. So, at least fifty percent is, which is basically what it is now, size-wise, will still be used as a shed for lawn equipment and the kid stuff, et cetera, et cetera, with the rest of it being used for storage. Y'all are welcome to stop by anytime you want, see that I'm not lying to you, which I've said multiple times on the oath, this is purely just for storage.
Is it still ten foot wide?
Yes.
And there was an issue that I think it was like three foot off the property line?
It is, it's about thirty-six inches off the line.
Three foot.
Yeah.
This is half a foot.
He, at the last meeting, I have in my notes that he moved it to three feet.
Oh, he moved it, okay.
Yeah. But it didn't get updated on this.
It is from November.
Where do you operate your business? Do you have an office?
It's mostly online, out of my basement.
Where do you operate your office out of? You have an office in your basement? You have a warehouse someplace where you store material?
Yeah, public storage and extra space.
And what, and you have, you have materials stored here also?
I'm sorry?
Do you have your products stored also in this shed?
Yes. No, the, the current shed at my house?
The one you wanna put in, the one you wanna put in?
That's where I would store stuff, as opposed to paying extra space storage.
Oh, so if you had this storage shed, you wouldn't be using public storage, you'd be using your, your.
Correct.
So, what makes you think you're not operating a business out of a residential zone? I could see you having an office. You have drafting tables, you have table, desks, you have file cabinets, you got a computer, you got a scanner, it's all in your basement, you don't have any customers come to your house. It's very innocuous.
That's, that's all.
But, but you have product delivered to your house now, UPS, Amazon.
More stuff delivered to the storage facility.
No, I'm saying, what you want is to, is to, be, have the ability to have this stuff delivered to your house, right? So.
More stuff comes in, yes.
Okay, um, LTL trucks come?
More UPS and LTL, but yes.
What is your business?
Computers, electronics, accessories.
And what would, what would be, be delivered to your property?
The same, computers, electronics, and accessories.
And the volume of those would be what?
Never more than a pallet.
How big is your storage unit now?
Currently?
And how many do you have?
Just one.
How big is it?
Right now, it's about fifteen by thirty.
It just sounds like you are operating a business out of a residential area.
You would be operating.
What's that?
I don't think there's any question.
They're just getting deliveries.
That's what it's proposing. And I, I think the problem we have now is whether it is or is not a use variance.
Mm-hmm. Oh, it would be clearly a use variance, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
And, and things like this are not permitted in other than main streets, right?
No, you can have your own personal needs stored in the shed.
Yeah, no, 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 no.
You have like a person, a professional business.
You can have a professional business.
An office, an office.
Yes. Nobody has to know. You're in your basement, nobody even knows.
It is, it is different, whether it's, you know, a pallet or two pallets.
He, he's already.
Non-residential activities, it's a business under your own vote. And I think you have to carry it against.
He, he's acknowledged that this is for business. He stores his business stuff in the storage. He wants to close the storage shed and move his stuff here. A equals B, B equals C, A equals C.
Correct. If I may, at the last meeting, this, this was all discussed and determined, and there didn't seem to be an issue.
You might not have heard it.
Clearly remember there was an issue because you, you opened your testimony by saying, at our last meeting, the board was hung up on whether this was a business use. So, yes, there was an issue last time, too.
And it was, it was discussed and determined that there are other people who operate out of their houses, and it wasn't an issue.
They're not sitting where you're sitting right now.
I'm sorry?
They're not sitting where you're sitting right now. You're here, we're considering your case, not other people.
That was a discussion that was here, that took place. That was not my discussion, it was between the board.
We didn't make any decisions, but we discussed a lot of things.
Okay.
Do you receive any pallets in your house now?
No.
But that'll, that'll change once you have this shed. You'll receive pallets?
Probably not, to be honest with you.
But you, you see, the problem is you start to craft your narrative toward our answers. You, you answered honestly the first time you said yes. The board showed that they weren't happy with that answer, and now you're backing off that answer.
I have a lot of stuff currently. A lot of it came in on pallets. A lot of it wasn't the smartest decision. I have, I have too much stuff to keep in my house, that's why I have the storage.
We understand that.
Do I plan on bringing in more stuff in the quantity that I've brought it in? No. But for the time being, until I can move it all, I'm spending five hundred dollars a month on this storage unit. Or I could spend fifteen or twenty thousand dollars to build this shed on my yard, and it'll pay for itself within a year or two.
But, but your five hundred dollars a month is a cost of doing business for what you do.
Sure.
Okay? You cannot operate a business out of a residential zone without a use variance. And you're not even here for a use variance. You're here for just some D variances of where you wanna site the building.
You need to talk to a lawyer.
Yeah.
You're using as one of the excuses is that you're gonna save money by doing this. That's not our concern.
Sure, understood.
At five hundred dollars a month, you're not saving, you're not recouping your money until after three years at least.
That's, that's academic. I mean, that's, that's.
I know, but.
It's a material.
That's the fact.
It's, it's, it's a material.
Making sure he's got his mask.
What do you wanna do? You wanna withdraw your application? You want us to go ahead and vote on it, so then you can appeal it? Uh, you wanna, I'm telling you, the chances of you getting a variance to put a, put commercial goods in a storage shed, even if you make it twenty by twenty, ain't gonna happen. I can tell you right now, it ain't gonna happen.
Are, are these meetings in the minute, subject to Oprah?
Yes.
Sure.
They're actually on.
Sure.
They're videotaped.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
You can find them on YouTube.
On YouTube.
But don't think, don't think because something you understood at the last meeting, just because you understood, maybe in our discussion, we talked about other things. Maybe I talked about the ice cream people from Lower Lake, Kiawah, okay? But, but they were determined by the board not to have it, because they didn't even store inventory in their house. They, they just parked their trucks.
Trucks, yeah.
Okay? And was, and it happened to be a truck guy in the back of the room, and he came up to the applicant and said, your trucks are legal in your driveway. Okay? Now, we thought that considered, that, that was, was, um, doing business in the house, and, and we found that it wasn't. So, totally different thing.
And the other thing you have to realize is, our thought process will evolve based And, and the other thing you have to realize is, our thought process will evolve based on your testimony as your testimony evolves. So we can think one thing, and, and as you keep talking and giving information that we ask for, it could change our thought process too. Until we vote, we're, we're deliberating.
Good point.
Wanna carry the case?
Why are we, can I just ask why we're carrying it?
Maybe he'll come up with a, maybe he just wants a storage shed. But nothing this big. I can't believe you would need a storage shed for your personal belongings and size.
Why didn't you carry the case, think about it, and then can let the board know what you're up to be?
Yeah, you don't have to come back, you can go to...
He's gonna have to give extensions.
Yeah. You got a date, uh, Nora?
No, I don't even have a date.
We gotta carry it to some date. I gotta carry it to some date.
Will you, are you willing to carry this with extensions, or do you want a decision tonight?
I'm really not even sure what that means.
Well, you have to consent to carry this. If you consent to carry it, then you can talk to an attorney, you can come back with a different plan. You may wanna withdraw it, you may send a letter and just say, "I'm gonna withdraw it." But, but we have, we're under a timeframe to make a decision. So you have to extend that timeframe, and that's fine, or if you don't, then we're gonna make a decision tonight on your application.
If I go ahead with the extension, then later decide to withdraw, is that okay?
That is okay.
Yeah. So you're at a disadvantage because you don't have an attorney, you don't have a planner, you don't have an engineer, you don't have an architect. Now whether you need all those people, I don't know. But you're right now getting advice from our, uh, board attorney, which he's not required to do. Okay? So... Got a date?
October eighteenth.
October eighteenth.
With all extensions?
With, you'll give us extensions through the end of October?
You have to say yes.
You have to say yes.
You have to say yes.
Well, yes, you can ask him to arrange it, doesn't it?
In the microphone.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. And, uh, are any members of the public here for this application? No members of the public are here?
Yes, there is.
Okay, this case is being carried to October eighteenth, without notice, okay? Do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
Thank you, all have good night.
Definitely go talk to an attorney.
It's gonna cost them a lot of money. It's gonna cost them more than that. Go, go ahead and go, whatever happens, happens. You take care of yourself, go ahead and go.
Okay.
Okay. Application twenty-three seventeen, Marco Tucchirelli, ninety Morris Avenue. C variance to legalize a covered cellar entrance, addition for carport, paper driveway, paper walks.
Sir, raise your right hand, you swore a firm testimony you're about to give before the board's truth up your guard. And for the record, you're Marco Tucchirelli, you're the owner of the subject property. All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, please, if you could sit and just speak into the microphone. Thank you.
Mr. Tucchirelli, um, you're here to legalize things now. Did you build all this stuff?
Uh, yes.
Without permits?
I can explain, yes.
No building permits?
No.
No zoning permits?
Not that, no.
Harb, were you totally ignorant of the laws in this state and this town with regard to stuff like this?
I...
We have to swear, she's gonna...
She's a witness.
She's a witness, okay.
She's the attorney.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I'm... I can't say I was totally aware. Um, I, I am now.
You are now.
I am now. I, I wanna say that the cellar was built more out of necessity at the time when, um...
Speak up, please.
Sorry. The cellar at the time was built out of a, a necessity because, uh, I was getting a lot of water in the basement.
Okay.
I understand, and, uh, and my wife was pregnant at the time, and I, um, didn't want her to be cleaning water off the floor while I was at work. And, uh, so I, yes, I did build it. And, uh, and the reason for the cover, um, it's because the ground sloping towards the house, in the side of the house, and it cannot be sloped in the other direction because there is actually sewer line that is higher than the door, the bottom of the door. Thank you.
So cute.
How did you get, how did you get here?
I'm sorry?
How did you get here?
Here?
Why?
Why are you here?
You did everything?
Yes.
And then somebody came and said you did...
So, I actually got here because I was, I hired someone to, uh, uh, outbuilding, uh, a second driveway, say, or, like, a section of the, yeah, like, a second driveway, like, a portion of a, uh, on the side of the garage that was, uh, paved, and, um, this person that I hired told me was, the permit was not necessary. I trusted him. And it turned out that somebody didn't appreciate...
Somebody came by and said...
Somebody came by and said they needed a permit, so the guys that I hired actually left.
Did you pay him?
Uh, I had to pay him for the day, yes.
And he did work or did not do?
He did a small amount of work, um, he moved some dirt.
Who finished the driveway? It says it exists.
I'm sorry?
It says this paper driveway exists. Did you finish it?
No, I didn't finish the dri- no, I stopped at the day that I was stopped. I just, I just told the, the contractor that I hired to leave. Because, uh...
You're gonna have to speak up, it's like...
I'm sorry.
He's nervous, so he's...
Yeah, don't be nervous, like Chad today's doing, I'm gonna treat you very nicely.
So, um, the driveway being questioned, um, is not built. It started to be built, but I was stopped as soon as I was told.
We have a survey with certain areas highlighted.
Yes.
One of them is this driveway, so that is not built.
It's not built.
What's there now? Is it gravel or...
Dirt, dirt and, uh, two blocks probably. They just removed some dirt.
Okay.
And, um...
Then it shows a sidewalk going over to the edge of your property. Is that built or not?
A sidewalk going to the edge.
Survey, survey with you?
Yes.
Two surveys, one's existing, one's...
The sidewalk, the sidewalk goes behind the current garage on an angle up to the left, and then makes a direct to the...
Oh, okay.
The side yard, I don't know what's...
It's a little, it's a little strip of pavement specifically.
What's that for?
Yes, it is.
Which, where is it going?
So, um, my in-laws are parents, my wife's parents, they live in the, in the house next door. So they're basically walking back and forth, yes.
You must have put a gate up though.
Somebody would, uh, I guess. They're nice enough.
Then there's a lighter shade, shaded area that's not shown on the existing. Does that exist already?
It says it exists.
The lighted share is existing, uh, in orange.
All right.
Well, that, for that one, I filed for a, a permit many, in two thousand seventeen, I would say. I have approved of that permit.
So you got a permit for that?
And, yes.
And you got a metal log and didn't get another one, all right.
Yes.
But, but on, it says proposed, yet it says existing.
Yeah.
And then on the existing side, it's not shown. So what if...
Because he did it in two thousand seventeen, this is...
Yeah, so the, so the, the orange, the orange one, it's existing, the red ones are, are existing, or...
And to, to carry on to the left, where the existing is that you did prior to the left, there's a little bit that wraps around the house?
Yes.
Is that existing?
It's, uh, it's, it's some papers are there, yes. Some papers are there, and they go to the cellar where the cover is.
And the covered cellar entrance way exists too?
The, the cover is existing, the cellar cover is existing, and that, as I was saying earlier, that's because, uh, I built it out of a necessity, yes. And I made a mistake.
When did you build that cellar entrance?
The cellar entrance, uh, we established was, uh, uh, when she was pregnant with her, so...
So you built that in twenty eighteen, and then you built the cover?
Sorry.
If you're...
If she wants to speak, just suggesting, just suggesting.
You're gonna tell them stuff, I have no problem with that. He has to repeat it.
I gotta say, I gotta say.
On the record, okay?
So we, um...
If you wanna come up and, if you wanna come up and sit and testify, we'd be more than welcome to have you.
Raise your... Raise your right hand, you swore a firm testimony you're about to give before the board's truth up your guard.
Yes, I do.
For the record, state and spell your name.
Carla, C-A-R-L-A, Tucchirelli, T-U-C-C-I-A-R-E-L-L-I.
You're sworn, ma'am, thank you.
Okay.
You're up.
She okay there, the little one?
Uh, he's asleep, yeah.
Okay, good.
He fell asleep on the way over.
Good, okay. So what we were saying, what, what...
Yes.
What's, what year was the, um...
The cellar, uh, uh, in the spring eighteen.
Eighteen, how long have you been in the house?
Since two thousand sixteen, March.
Two thousand sixteen?
Yes.
Uh, did we determine this is in a, uh, this is a B-three zone with fifteen thousand square feet, isn't it?
He's got it.
And he's got it, he's got fifteen thousand square feet, so it's, it's a legit... It's just that the house is built all in, all in the, uh, first third of the...
Yes.
It's like, you got the huge backyard, you know?
Yeah, full of boulders.
Have you talked to your next door neighbors about?
What's his in-laws?
I mean, obviously you had to notify your neighbors.
Yes, I did.
I'm sure your in-laws didn't give you a hard time. What about the neighbor on the other side? Did you talk to him?
I notified them by, uh, mail. Mail, I sent them, I sent them.
You never, you never questioned, you never, and he's not here tonight?
He is here too.
He is here?
Yeah.
Oh, he is here, okay.
Yeah.
All right. So...
There's no engineer letter or anything with this?
From me, no.
No. To your knowledge, does the neighbor that's not your relative have any issues with water? I guess we're gonna ask.
I have no knowledge of that.
Okay.
Yes, there is a, um...
There was an engineer letter?
It's a, uh, May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
May eighteenth.
I don't think I had it.
I don't think I have it either.
What does it say? Chaz?
This is for Marco Tucchirelli. Um, it's, it's, uh, talks about the property, fifty-nine square feet, a cellar-covered entrance, four hundred and eighty-one square feet addition for carport, one hundred and ninety-five square feet of paper driveway, one hundred and seventy-five square feet of paper walk, and one hundred and forty-six square feet of paper walk.
Is it the same application or different? Same application?
What does the engineer say?
Wait, this is, I'm going by the last name for Marco.
That's me.
Marco Tucchirelli.
Did you get your senior report?
Twenty-three seventeen, yep, that's the right one.
So, that's the application, yes.
What is he saying, what is the engineer saying?
He has, uh, five, six comments. The first comment is, "The application has increased the impervious coverage on the lot, which results in a significant increase of stormwater runoff from the property. This is particularly concerning for the applicant neighboring property to the east, which is downgrade. The applicant is required to address this increase in stormwater runoff either with dry wells or other stormwater management measures. The design and details of the proposed stormwater management measures must be measured to and provided by this office." That's the first one.
Did you get that letter?
No.
No.
No, no, I never seen it.
Yeah, number two, "If a drawl system is proposed, an infiltration test..."
So do we have to carry this 'cause he needs to see the letter and...
I just, I wanna ask Nora, why didn't we get the letter, do you know?
I can't, I don't even have it in my file, so...
It's on me, and I just didn't email it, but I had to print it out. Do you wanna take a look at it?
Do you want me to give it to the chairman?
So what we're talking about is the engineer of the town
Yes.
gives his opinions
Yes.
of the situation. And sometimes he'll say, "Well, you need to do this to correct it, and then for us to decide if we're gonna prove it."
Understood.
You didn't see it, nor did the board, so it's an issue.
Well, seems like.
I, I have a feeling based on what's just happened, that you're not going to be in a position to answer that letter tonight. Okay? Because he stood, because the engineer is talking about, um, remediation of, of...
Runoff.
Runoff from rain, okay? And the fact that you've increased the impervious coverage, which means less, less rain will penetrate.
Okay.
Okay? And he's talking about dry wells and things like that. All right?
Can I just, is the, the coverage, is it the patio that we had gotten the permit for, or the little pathway that's near the...
It's in general, it includes the carport, carport and everything. See, the carport, you may have to put leaders and gutters and leaders and run them underground to a, to a, to a dry well, okay?
The cellar.
Does it matter if it's on the complete opposite end of the house, the carport?
No, it, it meant, it meant the cellar.
The cellar, you meant?
It's the fact that you, you're increasing the impervious and building coverages.
Yeah.
Okay? And the township engineer has become very concerned about building and things that we grant variances for without compensating, um,
Stormwater.
Stormwater management, okay? I have a feeling you might need to talk to a professional.
Could be a landscape.
Well, you, you should talk with the engineer. It may be a simple thing. You can just say, "Look, I need a dry well in the front yard," uh, and it may not. So, talk to him first and find out what you're getting into.
Ju- Justin, what's his name?
Lizza, Justin Lizza.
Justin Lizza.
He's the town engineer.
Okay.
Okay, and, and, Nora will give you a copy of that letter, okay? So what I'm gonna recommend is that we carry this case to a future date when you have an opportunity to deal with these items.
With all extensions.
It's not, it, this is not uncommon.
I am.
Trust me, it's not uncommon.
Understand, yes.
We just love to see you come back, you know, and come back, and only kids.
I'm sure.
Okay. When?
I'm gonna come on October fourth.
October fourth.
With extensions.
Seven P.M. I'm sorry, yes, seven P.M.
Se- seven P.M. on October fourth is when this case will be carried to.
With all extensions, sir?
Can I help you? Can I help you?
We are the adjoining neighborhood, we have some things to say here.
You, you'll have an opportunity on October fourth.
We're not deciding anything today.
We're not, we're not at the point of having any testimony from other than the applicant right now. I don't know if you heard the procedure before, okay? That's the procedure. He's gotta finish his case first. And then you, if you have stuff you'd like to present, at that point, you can.
And you may wanna talk to each other beforehand, if you can...
Yeah, it could, it could save a lot of aggravation if you talk to each other beforehand.
I didn't know.
Now, that could happen, huh?
I didn't know.
So if you put it, will you grant all extensions?
I'm willing to, I didn't know there was a problem, so, would, publicly, I'm gonna say, would...
But you'll give us all extensions?
Yeah, we're gonna need an extension of time.
Yes, okay.
And you'll grant that through October thirtieth?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
So that's the story. October fourth, this case is being carried to. Do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yes, of course.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we'll see you on October fourth.
Thank you.
My wedding anniversary.
Thank you.
Guess we're not going out to dinner, then? Chairman? Fifty-four. Fifty-four, yes, siree. Chairman, if you start a king of two weeks. You have a question?
Yes, sir.
What's your question?
You have, you have to go right into microphones.
They're in there?
The owner of the adjoining property flew in from California for this meeting here tonight.
Well, what happens?
You want me to do? Well, what do you want me to do? Tell me what you want me to do.
Well, we have our paperwork in order.
Did I tell you that there's a process here? This is a quasi-judicial proceeding. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding. This is not an informal discussion, okay? I cannot let you do anything tonight. I'm sorry.
October fourth at seven P M.
Talk to your neighbor. Yeah. Spend twenty minutes together and figure out what you need to do.
Why don't you talk to him?
Okay, case, uh, twenty-three, twenty-three. Francesco Ramirez, twenty-four Lincoln Avenue. See variance to construct the patio and replace a front wall.
Sir, raise your right hand. You swore a firm testimony about to give before the boards through self-pyard. And you're Francisco, um, Ramirez? And you're the owner of the subject property?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the witness is sworn. Have a seat, you're speaking through the microphone, please.
Okay, so, um, Mr. Ramirez, uh, you're seeking impervious coverage variance. Forty-seven-two-five is existing, forty is allowed, fifty-two-point-fifty-three is proposed. You have a seven thousand five hundred square foot lot in an R-four zone, so you have a more than sufficient lot. Why do you have so much impervious coverage?
Bob, before we proceed, can we just find out if he's seen the memo from Mr. Lizza?
Oh, yeah.
Go through this again.
Have you seen the engineer's report?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And the engineer's report is gonna talk about, about runoff and dry wells and things like that. Okay? You've, you've read that?
Yeah, I've read the letter.
Okay. Are you in a position to, um,
Comply.
Uh, um, comply with what he's looking for?
Well, let me tell you something, uh, first, uh, when I applied, uh, for the application, it says to replace patio, not to install a brand-new patio, the...
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Yeah, we're having, you have to speak a little bit louder, 'cause this...
Okay, yeah. Better now?
Yeah.
All right, thanks. Um, I have already an existing patio. So, what happened is, when I start, I hired somebody to help me to remove the patio.
Right.
Because you got cracks
Right.
and uneven surfaces. So, I decided to put, uh, pavers.
Right.
So, um, when I, um, I did, like, ninety percent remove all the concrete
Right.
patio. And, um, it wa, the dumpster was full. When the other one came, I asked her to drop on, on the front, on the street. And he told me that, he asked me thinking, um, if I have a permit for the, you know, do the patio, I mean, put a dumpster on the street. And I, he said, "I don't have any permit." So, I said, "You have to get a permit for a dumpster on the street." That's where all this started.
Is the patio that shows on the plan proposed, is it, there was a concrete one in the same area?
Yes, yes.
Same size?
Same size. As you can see of the picture. That's existing patio, that's where I started working.
Okay, you broke that up, and you're gonna replace it with pavers.
With pavers, exactly. You can see, I'm sorry, we should have...
You couldn't tell that from this plan. The plan says proposed patio, it doesn't say replaced.
Well, like I said, on, on the application, I put, "Replace patio." Now, the patio looks like this right now.
From concrete to pavers.
Just, just to pavers.
The, the one survey doesn't even show it.
Right. Right, because when I always ask for the, for, for the survey, I don't have any. So, I have no choice to get a survey. And unfortunately, when I got the survey, the, the concrete was already removed.
Let me, let me, let me ask you a couple of questions. Let me, let me see if we can, let me see if we can work around this in some...
Right.
When was your house built?
Uh, sixty years ago, maybe.
Sixty, are you sure?
Well, I've been there seventeen years.
Was it built prior to nineteen fifty-three?
I have no, no answer for that. I cannot answer that question.
Yeah, but if the patio was put in...
Yeah, could that patio, did you put that patio in?
No.
And tear it out?
No.
It was there when you bought the house?
It was, like this.
And how long?
I do nothing else.
How long have you owned the house?
Seventeen years.
So, it's, it's more than seventeen years old?
Yeah, but just, John, on the existing survey
Yeah, it doesn't show.
Yeah, it doesn't show.
September twenty-seven, twenty-one, it doesn't show.
It doesn't show, because...
And I think that's what probably flagged it.
So, he...
And you have, you have pictures showing there was a patio there.
Yes, it was a patio.
You could probably agree to comply with the township engineer's recommendation once he knows the full story.
Well, when I, I was...
If he realized that the patio is a replacement, and you're not really increasing the coverage by what the zoning
Yeah, I should get the numbers.
Then he's probably not requiring anything.
Yeah.
That's your risk. Do you have any runoff problems? Any runoff problems? Your neighbors complain about runoff, water runoff from your property? No.
No. Been there seventeen years. Nothing happened. They said that, that, um, the patio got cracked, so we always used it like a walkway, the, the back door, as you can see it. And we discussed, I wanted, you know, nice and smooth surface.
Probably it's even more basic. Go look back to the zoning officer and explain, "I'm just replacing this patio."
That's all I want. That's all I want, every patio replacement.
Did you tell that to anybody? Did you tell that to the zoning officer by chance?
Sounds like nobody did.
Right.
But, like, the application says, "Replace patio."
You know what it could have been? It could have been installed without...
Nothing is new.
Oh, sure, right.
And then he buys it.
Right.
And then it gets flagged.
It's still seventeen years old.
So, could we approve?
Why isn't the patio on?
Could we approve the twenty-one survey?
Longer than that.
That's the question.
Yeah. That's what flagged it. Because you got a twenty-twenty-one survey. So, if it was there seventeen years ago, the, the surveyor would have seen it and should have put it on.
Yeah.
And that's, and, and they're probably thinking that this was put in...
I'm guessing she's... Or legal after the property.
Yeah.
When, when did you break, when did that, when did you chop that one up? How, what, how long ago?
This is about two years.
So, it was, after, you chopped it up before you had the survey done?
Before, yes. Unfortunately, I got that, this...
They take it off, doesn't really puzzle it up?
Yeah, he broke it up two years ago.
He broke it up before he had the survey done, so it's not gonna put it on the...
Yeah, that was, that was my fault, yeah.
Good question.
I didn't know, that was my first time.
But at least you have pictures showing it was there.
So, what...
I'd go back and square one, I think.
Talk to him.
You may not even have an application.
And you're replacing it with pavers that are gonna have some seepage between the blocks? Or you're gonna solid, solid coat?
A lot of pavers, like, uh, at least a thousand pieces, maybe a...
The kind of, the kind of thing that, that has some, uh,
Joint, yeah.
water can go through.
Exactly.
Not concrete, sand or something.
Yeah, exactly, sand is in between, yeah.
Sand.
Yes.
Mr. Ramirez, I think, uh, the best thing for you to do is to talk to Nora about going back to the zoning office. Nora, you...
No, I'm, I disagree.
You disagree, it's not gonna happen.
No, because, um...
It's not gonna happen.
There's nothing saying there was, um, the patio had a permit to begin with.
Right.
He removed it, so it lost any, um, you know, non-conforming, you know, pre-existing. Uh, so, and he's over on coverage. Um, he's also, um, and that's the, that's the main issue here. He's over on cover, impervious coverage, plus he's proposing, like, a runoff or something. So, I, I disagree with that.
What about, he's replacing it, so?
You, you...
Not once you remove something, it's as if it never existed.
Yeah, so why don't we just
There's two years between...
Decide the case? And him stipulate that he'll agree to do, go along with what the engineer says?
Does the gravel area count towards impervious?
Yes.
It probably...
In precipitating, if it's not grass, it's coverage.
Why don't you just, like, shave back some of that gravel area, get, you know, twelve percent down, and you're done? Do you need all that gravel? There's a lot of gravel there.
What, by the driveway?
Well, I could remove some gravel, yeah, on the back.
How many, how many, the math people here, how many square feet of gravel does need to pull back to drop?
To go with...
Twelve percent.
The gravel area, do you talk about it, this is the garage?
One percent of seventy-five-hundred square feet is seventy-five square feet. So, if he has to go to...
So, if you want the patio that size, pull back some of the gravel, throw some grass down, shrink that area a little bit, and then you get your full patio, you don't have to be here.
So, if he goes back to the forty-seven-point-two-five, which is, which exists?
Yeah. I don't even know if that's...
That's five, that, that's only like...
Is that allowable, though?
What's that?
Is that allowed, because it's forty is what we have?
Well, no, what I'm saying is, he's existing at forty-seven-twenty-five, it's not coming, he doesn't need a variance to stay where he is.
He's gotta get down to forty, right?
No.
No?
Get down to forty-seven, keep it at forty-seven-point-twenty-five, it's just a trade-off. Get rid of, now, forty-seven-twenty-five divided by seventy, uh, that's three, that's, uh... But Bob, she, Nora's saying it's not a trade-off, because it...
Because it's gone. Because it's gone. It wasn't permitted.
No, 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 no. Right now, he's got forty-seven-point-twenty-five. The patio's gone, and I count the patio right now.
Okay.
Right, right at the back. So, all you have to do is get rid of about two-hundred-and-fifty square, three-hundred square feet of, uh, gravel.
Gravel.
And then you'll come back to the forty-seven-twenty-five, and you would agree to do that?
That's that gravel next to the garage in the back.
Yeah, next to the garage.
Just plant grass.
Yeah.
Just plant grass.
I could do that.
Why is it all there?
So, so, if, if he agrees to keep it at forty-seven-twenty-five by removing the, the equal amount of gravel, are we okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's...
As the man works.
Okay, okay.
The zoning officer has to be okay.
What's that?
The zoning officer has to be okay.
No, we're gonna give him a variance for it. We're gonna give him a variance for this, if he removes three-hundred square feet of...
Frank, you're gonna give a variance for, for the existing is forty-seven-point-two-five proposed? Yeah, we legalize the exist...
That's correct. The way, the way you should accomplish that is get rid of three-hundred square feet of gravel.
I agree, especially...
That's the way it was. Well, by the half.
It's always been there.
Yes.
No, he's a poor guy.
And he's, and he's agreed, so?
We're gonna agree to that.
We're gonna give him a variance for forty-seven-point-two-five. You're gonna get there by just removing three-hundred square feet of the gravel, throw some dirt, some grass.
Yeah, yeah.
You're done.
Okay.
And then you get your paper patio.
Or, or you shrink your paper patio?
Or you shrink your paper patio, but I was trying to get you there without having to do that.
No, I, I rather remove the, the gravel, the one next to the garage.
The higher, the water goes right through the gravel, but who am I?
Any, any member of the public have any questions of this witness on testimony given this evening? I hear none, seen none. You're good with this, right?
Yes.
You can live with this.
Right.
Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? In support of this application? I hear none, seen none.
I think I got one done.
We, uh, we, we, we came to a good, a middle of the road here, guys. Okay, someone frame a resolution. But I think we have one more case tonight, don't we?
Application twenty-three, code twenty-three. Francisco Ramirez, twenty-four Lincoln Avenue, block five-ninety-nine, lot seventeen, zone R-four, recommend granting a C variance to construct the patio uh, and replace the front wall, contrary to section four-thirty, dash thirty-five, column thirteen, at this forty-five-point-seven... Four-seven-two-five. Coverage percentage.
Second.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Burkowitz.
Yes.
Josh Woods.
Yes.
Capless.
Yes.
Mitarella.
Yes.
Three.
He's not here.
He left.
Right, sorry. Ready?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Results of variance is granted. You can start doing your due diligence. We'll memorialize this at our next meeting, and then you'll be free to proceed, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Yep.
I think that was a great, uh, effort we did, guys. And Nora, you're the best, let me tell you.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. Keep us under control. All right, let's call case, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four, VidaQuest.
Jefferson and Thresher.
No one's there.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Aaron Broughton with Cole Johnson, behalf of VidaQuest International LLC. Uh, my office provided notice by certified mail on June twenty-sixth, and posted the other record on June twenty-ninth. I request the board formally take jurisdiction.
I'm sorry, you have to...
Sorry, I request the board formally take jurisdiction, notice provided by mail on twenty-sixth of June, and the record on twenty-ninth.
Okay.
Uh, nowhere's concerned. Uh, property is one-hundred Jefferson Road, precipitating. Um, west side of, which, west side extent of Jefferson Road extends one-two-eighty-seven. It is block seven-thirty-seven, lot five, in the S E D five zoning district. Just in interest of being quick here, I will get on just a brief rundown of the C bulk variances we have. They're driven basically by the, the fact that we have half the property and we're along the highway. So, we have a sign, we have a second sign versus the original one sign required. First one is showing us, the other is the other tenant. Uh, it's on the back of the building, around the front, face two-eighty-seven. It is high because of the trees, and it is technically large because the queue from VidaQuest drops down below, and you draw the box at the full height. And it's gonna be a turn-lit sign, we have two witnesses tonight. First is Julio Hernandez, our signage designer, and then Kate Keller, our professional planner. Ready to go?
Ready to go, yep.
Okay. Sir, just raise your right hand, you swore a firm testimony about to give before the boards through self-pyard. For the record, state and spell your name.
Julio Hernandez.
Hernandez, H E R.
H E, H R, N E, D E Z.
And your expertise is in signage? How many years you've been working for the signage?
About twenty-two years.
Forty-three years? And you've testified before the boards as well, correct? Are you sworn?
Yeah. Don't we have a niesel?
I'm sorry?
Don't we have a niesel?
No, they usually bring their own, they may.
Oh, okay.
Uh, can hold it up for him if he needs me to? That'd be great, thank you. Yes, to mark, this is A-one, this was included in the applicant package.
Again, my name is Julio Hernandez. I'm, uh, new concept in signage, Portobello, New Jersey. Uh, we was hired to work on a, on a sign, um...
Where's the microphone?
Hold it. Again, uh, we was hired to work on a, on a sign for VidaQuest. Um, this will be in, um, a million and a half square feet, uh, property. And, um, And, um, this property already have a, have a sign which, um, belong to, to one of the tenant. This sign is facing, facing, uh, Jefferson Street. Our sign, um, uh, we proposing will be on a forty-three-point-eight, um, actually, a forty-two feet tall wall, um, by three-hundred-and-seventeen feet long. This wall is facing, um, uh, I, uh, two-eighty-seven. Uh, at this moment, it's no sign on that wall. And, um, uh, the sign consists in the, in the logo of the, of the company.
Is that the mark two or is that?
Do you need us to mark them? They were included in the package, sir.
As long as they're including it, don't mark it.
Okay.
Which, um, which consists in two colors, blue and, blue and red. Like, um, uh, like Mr. Roman said, uh, that our problem is the queue. The queue have a, have a, like a little arrow on the bottom which exceed the, the, the height. Uh, we aware of that, and, uh, we proposing the, the size because, um, uh, just to, um, uh, improve visibility from, from the highway.
It's also a bit taller than the ordinance allows. I'll see.
Exactly, yeah. It's, um, overall is, um.
How tall is it?
Um, this is, um, the sign is four, the sign, the, the total height of the sign is five feet because the queue. But, uh, actually, the letters are four feet tall.
Right, and, uh. Top elevation, top elevation of the sign is twenty-nine.
Yeah. So the sign will be from the ground, um, uh, the sign will be from the ground.
Twenty-nine foot, one inch.
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
The sign is very purported. The building wall is about three-hundred-and-sixty feet long. Sign's thirty-two feet long.
You can see on the rendering.
No red.
Yeah, it's all, it's, it's correct. It's all commercial. There's across the highway, about six-hundred feet from the actual sign is some residences, but it's internally lit at night, correct?
Yes.
And there's no glare?
It's, um, yeah, the sign is internally lit, but it's not like overwhelming, illuminated.
Sorry?
Is it sound?
No, it's just the trees.
No, on the other side of the road?
I believe there is a sound wall.
Well, they.
On the west side of two-eighty-seven?
Yeah.
Is it going to be lit twenty-four? I mean, is it going to be turned off at night or?
Exactly.
It'll be, it'll be lit at night.
But it's a subdued, the way this picture is, very subdued.
Yeah, internal LED lighting.
It's not going to project.
No.
Not this light. It's going to be overnight.
Sorry?
Throughout the night, the sign going to be.
Will be, will be on during the night, but this, the, the.
It's that blue color, you know?
We are like.
There is a sound wall on the side.
We are like four-hundred feet from the, from, you know, from the, um, from the close of neighbor. So.
Not bothering anybody.
With no impact, yeah, definitely.
It's not a bright color.
No.
Subdued.
And it's, it's internal LED, it's sort of like a glow. It's not going to be projected out.
Like blended with the wall, wall color.
Soothe your sleep.
Excellent.
All right, I think that's it.
Good.
All right.
Any other witnesses?
Uh, our planner, Kate Keller.
I'll be very brief.
Ma'am, raise your right hand. You swear a firm testimony you're about to give before the board serves yourself you've got.
Thank you.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Sure. Kate Keller, last name is K.E.L.L.E.R.
And your planner, all your licenses are in full force in effect. You've either given testimony before this board or other boards of the state.
Yes, I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chen. The witness is sworn as an executive, and she's qualified.
Thanks.
Thank you. Um, so just briefly, you know, this, you just saw this sign. You know, what we're asking for is a sign along Route two-eighty-seven, which is a kind of a unique situation that the sign ordinance does not always consider. So the variances we're seeking are to permit a second business identification sign where there's already one on the front of the building for a separate company that's not for Vitaquest, uh, permit the sign on a rear face of the building, even though it does technically front Route two-eighty-seven. That's not the frontage. Um, and the sign will be twenty-nine point, twenty-nine feet, one inch above grade where a maximum twenty-five feet is permitted by ordinance. And finally, the sign slightly exceeds the area, which is, which is going to be one-hundred-and-sixty square feet where a hundred-and-fifty feet is, um, permitted. You know, and any, I think that all of these, um, you know, all, all of these variances can be granted under the C-two criteria in which the benefits outweigh the detriments. Um, in terms of the positive criteria, um, you know, we're looking at a property that is, you know, it's a very large building. It's on the side of one-eighty-seven. Actually, two-eighty-seven. There, I think there is a one-eighty-seven. Um, on the side of two-eighty-seven, and this allows for some identification in a way that's very unobtrusive, but will be able to be visible over the, um, you know, over the tree line from the highway. It just kind of helps visitors, just kind of identifies the property. Um, and I think that all of the variances that we're really requesting in terms of the height, um, and the area are very minor in nature when you look, given the size of the building and the fact that the variance is really only needed for area due to the logo, which, you know, is, is the company's proprietary logo. Um, I think that, in my opinion, purposes of municipal land use law are met, including purpose A, guiding municipal action to promote the health, public health, safety, and general welfare, uh, promote desirable visual environment. This is a rather attractive sign. It's not bright colors. It won't be, uh, you know, outstanding, glowing, and it provides sufficient space and appropriate locations for a business such as this because of, you know, it really allows the site to be identified. Um, in terms of negative criteria, I think that, um, those were just really kind of discussed. This is a, along the highway. It's rather unobtrusive, given the size of the wall, and it will not be, um, will not have any negative impact, in my opinion, on the residential properties across the highway, which are, you know, over six, seven-hundred feet away. There's a tree buffer, and there is a sound wall on the side of, uh, two-eighty-seven north, next to those residential properties. So in conclusion, I believe that the, uh, in my opinion, the, uh, proofs are met for the granting of this variance, and I have no further testimony.
Thank you. Any questions of this witness?
Nope.
Any members of the public have any questions of this witness? Hear none, see none. You done, counselor?
Uh, just in response to the engineer's report of May eighteenth, we do agree to coordinate all sign installations permitting township director's office.
I'm sorry?
We agree to, uh, to coordinate all sign installation with, and final permitting with the director's office.
Okay.
What's Vitaquest? Just out of curiosity.
They are a, uh, something, health supplement manufacturer.
Are any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? Hear none, see none. Um, the minimalist request, guys?
Yep.
Yes.
Similar frame of resolution?
Application twenty-three, call him twenty-four, Vitaquest International LLC, one hundred Jefferson Road, block seven-thirty-seven, lot five, zone SED-dash-five-A, recommend regular C-variance to install, install signage.
Second, ready?
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskelitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Mitterella.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Hurricane. Hurricane.
Yes. Results of the variance is granted. We'll memorialize this at our next meeting, and you'll be free to proceed. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
And now we're done. Application twenty-two-seventy, All About the Journey.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board, Stephen Tomalack, and on behalf of the applicant, All About the Journey. We are here for a resumed public hearing. We began on April nineteenth, and the board had some feedback for us as to revisions it wanted to see on the site plan, as well as some other questions which we are going to present to the speaker. So, again, just some, where we were. This is an autism therapy center run by the woman on my left, Mary Jo Waldo, who operates a similar facility in Denville, and she would like to expand her business to operate a similar facility for persons with autism in Parsippany. Uh, at the last meeting, you heard from our engineer, Donna Bullock, who's here this evening to resume her testimony, talk about revisions to the plan. You heard from Mary Jo Waldo. We also heard from John McDonough. So without further ado, oh, before I even get to that, one of the questions the board asked was that we provide a occupancy estimate or a, based on the architecture of the code, fire safety, et cetera. So Nora, were we, we only had one marked exhibit at the last meeting, right? A-one, which was John McDonough's plan?
Okay.
I think so.
I don't remember.
So if I could, I'd like to distribute a letter we received from our registered architect on record as A-two, to today's date, which is seven twelve twenty-three. If I could ask if the chairman could come up. I hear. What I just marked as exhibit A-two is a letter from George Fernandez, architect. Long and the short of it, based on the proposed use, based on the twenty-twenty-one New Jersey International Building Code, it's his, uh, estimate that based on current code, there would be, uh, a maximum safe occupancy of thirty-six people in the entire building, eighteen persons per floor. So the board asked for that information, so that's what we're providing. Um, since the hour is getting late, I would like to ask Ms. Bullock to come on up, acknowledge that she remains her under oath from April nineteenth, if that's acceptable, Mr. Chen? Yes. And then, so Donna, you were here testifying last time. The board had a number of comments concerning changes to the driveway, changes to the parking, changes to the landscaping. Why don't you, we're going to mark that plan as exhibit A-dash-three, and if you could describe it, provide the date that's on the title block as the last revision date, and then identify those changes that you made to the proposed site plan for All About the Journey.
The main concern at the last hearing was that they wanted to see a landscaping plan, which, um, I have provided here on this landscape, uh, plan exhibit. It is sheet one of one, and it is dated seven-one-twenty-three. I also have copies to distribute before the board. Uh, if you want to take, take one and pass it along.
Is it A-three?
This is, uh, exhibit A-three.
Did you file this? Did you file this with Nora?
No.
No, I did not.
It's still working.
Seven-one-twenty-three, you didn't file?
So what I've done is prepared this exhibit so I can briefly discuss some of the comments that were of concern on the April nineteenth meeting. Um, one item was to remove the looped driveway and the secondary access. Um, the other discussion was to leave the asphalt pavement area basically where it is, um, not add the three additional spaces and increase in pavement, um, that, uh, and, and just provide pavement around it to box it off. Um, we also reduced the handicap loading, uh, spaces to the current requirements of five foot for the, uh, for the loading, uh, zone and, and eleven for the parking stall. Um, and we've act, we've added a, um, EV space make-ready, which will be, uh, shared between a standard stall and the handicap stall. We've added a stop sign and a stop bar. Uh, based on these revisions, eliminating all that asphalt, um, we now have a total percent lot coverage of twenty-eight percent, where thirty percent is allowable. So therefore, a request for a variance for percent lot coverage is no longer needed with this application. Um, we reduced the amount of grading and land disturbance to tie into the grades if we would have had to extend the driveway and, and, uh, do the grading for the, for the looped access drive. Um, we've eliminated the removal of a maple tree. Um, at the last testimony, it was discussed that there are two trees on site, both to the rear of the proposed patios and to the rear of the existing asphalt area that are dead and dying and need to be removed as a safety hazard for the property and the neighbors. Um, we provided, um, a note to say that the, the designation area for the right-of-way is a utility easement. Uh, percent building coverage was asked for, and that is calculated to be seven percent for existing and proposed. We have provided an open fence, um, from the intersection of the, the southerly easement line, a right-of-way line, um, up to the front setback line, a fifty percent open fence. And then from there, we have a proposed fence that continues along the right property line and six-foot vinyl fence along the rear, a six-foot vinyl fence along, uh, the, the, the right property line, and then tying into approximately the right rear of the existing building. Now to discuss the landscape plan, which was a concern. Uh, several of the neighbors had, uh, had concerns about the buffering and landscaping and the, uh, not being able to see. Along with the six-foot fence that will totally encompass the, uh, the rear portion of the property, we have, uh, an existing, well, we have existing, what we did was we located all the existing trees on site. So we have an existing fourteen abrevites that are along the frontage of the property. Um, and we have some tree line from a tree that's within the right-of-way that, uh, allows for natural screening. Um, and the proposed screening is, we have screening provided on the easterly side of the existing parking lot. Um, in, in that area, we have screening provided on the north side of proposed pavers.
Never saw any drawing.
Adjacent to the shed. And we have screening provided along the vinyl fence and to the right side of the pavers, um, adjacent to lot ninety-seven. Or is that a ninety-one? Hold on. Ninety-seven. Um, there's only one maple tree that will have to be removed uh, due to, uh, expansion of the width of the access drive to be twenty-four foot wide, um, into the, into the parking area. And that's pretty much it. That's pretty much what we talked about, that the, uh, you know, taking notes of what the neighbors' concerns were and addressing their issues.
Now, Donna? Well, there's an additional thing on your plan. There's some signage details, and I'd like to distribute to the board. These are on Donna's plan, but I'd mark them as A-four are the signage specs, which are both for a facade sign and a patio sign. Now, if the board will call, the board suggested that signage would be an appropriate, not, that's not the right word, suggested that we submit for signage rather than just leave that to some future date. Originally, no signage was proposed for this application. So, uh, Donna, as, as the board members distribute what's been marked as A-four, which is also sharing plan, could you describe the proposed signs for this facility?
Certainly. Um, on the front of the building, above the front door, is a sixty-eight inch by twenty, a sixty-eight inch long by twenty-foot-high, uh, sign that says.
Twenty. Twenty foot.
I am so sorry.
Right away.
Sorry, sorry. It's not as big as that wall. No, we, we're not on that wall. Okay, so twenty-inch-high by sixty-eight-inch-long sign with, uh, a, an emblem that you could see on your color rendering, and it says All About the Journey. The second sign is going to be located to the west side of the driveway access, and that sign is going to be a pole mount, a single pole mount, a double pole mount. Uh, doesn't seem to work in this situation. So it'll have a pole mount with a, with an arm, and there'll be a sign that is two-foot-six inches high by two feet wide, and the top of the post itself is going to be six feet above grade, and that has the same emblem, um, as does the, uh, sign on the building. And this says All About the Journey, one-oh-three-five, indicating the site address.
Where is it?
It's located right here.
That's the symbol?
That's the symbol for the sign. Um, I'm sorry, you're.
The symbol on the sign itself, is the symbol on top of the sign and the street number on the bottom of the sign? I think that's what Mr. Chen, yeah.
Oh, the.
I just, I, I couldn't read the proposed sign, post.
On the plan view?
And you have it right on the property line?
Yes, I have it right on the property line. The sign will not go over the property line. It'll, it'll meet right up to it.
Well, that was, um, if the board were called, we've addressed the comments, concerns, suggestions that we received, the feedback we received back on April nineteenth. I believe where we let Mr. McDonough, who's here this evening, he provided his planning testimony kind of at the tail end. Um, I believe where we were at was that all three of the witnesses are here. Um, they, the public began asking questions, but it was kind of late in the evening, so it was time to carry it to this evening to address these issues and also to allow the public to ask further questions and then comment. Counsel, didn't, didn't the board ask for, I thought it was architectural drawings because there was concern how the, um, space was going to be used? And I, although I appreciate A-two, no one can ask this letter any questions, and the public can't, um. We don't have, right now, that is based on the current house. Mm-hmm. And there wasn't any proposed, as Mary Jo testified, the plan is to, to use the house as it's laid out, use it. So, but of course, if the board wants. I think that's what they, I thought that's what they had asked. My notes provided that they wanted a load limit for the building, so that's what we asked the architect, kind of what the capacity. Weren't there also questions about exits? How, how people would leave up, from upstairs if there was a fire, the two? Well, Mr. Mr. Fernandez's report says there's two means to be. This is a one-page. Yeah. And this is hearsay. This is.
True.
Yeah. It is. And, and the board can't ask this piece of paper
And the board can't ask this piece of paper any questions. I'm sure all these people out here are going to have some questions.
Again, we don't have that this evening, but we'd be happy to provide it if the board finds that relevant, or we'd be happy to provide it as an approval condition, of course. But that's effectively our direct case. Again, Mr. McDonough, Ms. Pollock, and Ms. Wallock are all here.
As Peter was talking about, we've got 18 people per floor maximum, Mark.
Max, based on the current layout.
And my notes indicate different levels of population from your client's testimony. How are we going to, one, firm up the 18 per floor? And, second, her testimony, to the extent it now matches what the architect says, I don't think it does quite. I think there was more people in that building from your testimony than 36.
Well, obviously, now that we know what the occupancy... we were hoping the number would be higher, but it's not. So the use cannot exceed...
Don't we have to get that testimony amended?
Yeah, I mean, Mary Jo...
I'd be happy...
The question is, is that you hope...
Our problem is, is we don't know if 18 is a solid number.
Yeah.
If you don't... you don't know what?
You don't know if the 18 per floor is a solid number because there's no plan attached to it that the board and its...
There's no person.
There's no testimony.
Yeah, I mean, he puts his hand up, gets it to warning the lights of the architect, and then tell him, here's the rule, it's 18. Okay. Now we know it.
There's a rule down in Stafford Township, if you have a rental house, that when they figure out how many people you can sleep there, it's 75 square feet for the first person in the bedroom and 50 square feet for each additional person. And when my wife and I looked at the house and looked at what the town would allow, we said, "They're crazy." Because nobody plotted it out.
Right.
And you couldn't put 14 people... you couldn't sleep 14 people in that stuff. And I'm looking at... I'm thinking about that and looking at this. Is there going to be desks? Is there going to be partitions? Is there going to be walls? Is there... not walls, you know, like...
Chairs?
Cubicles? As a certain plan in mind to treat artistic population with a certain number of people that are performing this task, and my notes don't indicate the same as the architect's indication. And you were pretty candid, we had hoped there would be higher.
Right, right.
So somehow, rather, we've got to get that back together.
Well, right now, based on at least what Mr. Fernandez's letter suggests, is that we can't exceed 36, and that's...
But we don't know how he came up with that.
You know?
I feel we were like the first case we had tonight, we was spinning our wheels.
Yeah. I mean, again, we were... to be candid, we were lucky we were able to get this letter in time for this.
You're right.
It was... it's not an easy thing.
You couldn't get the guy here.
It's not... it's not easy. But of course, that's the code. We're willing to live by it, you know, even if eventually, if we come in with floor plans and the number goes up, the number goes up. But we're willing to live by this number, which is based on what the current house provided.
You heard what the chairman said was, "You may not have 18."
That's true. That's true. But again, when this goes for permitting, it's going to be... there's going to be a limit, and the fire marshal's going to issue...
I think this board's going to be the one who says yay and hay on it, and if they say yes, it's certainly going to be a population restriction or a client restriction, I just want to call it.
But that's, we're willing to abide by it because we really don't have any choice. It's the laws of the law.
We don't want arbitrarily throw a number down.
No, no, I understand that.
But isn't it your burden to say, "This is the number," have someone to testify that...
How it's going to be done?
I mean, that's your burden. It's not our burden to come up with numbers.
The board asked us... my notes have asked for a load limit for the building, and my notes have... we get letter from architect, so that's what I did. In hindsight, I really wish I'd found somebody that I could bring tonight and testify this. But the reality is, is that we're not proposing to make any modifications to the building that would change this. Again, if the Parcypti Fire Marshal says the number's lower, it's lower. And that's our... that's our burden, not the board's burden. We have to comply with the law. And again, we were hoping the number would be higher, but it's not. And we're going to live within the confines of what we have. I mean, one of the benefits of this is that it's an actual house, and that... and Mary Jo testified as to how that really helps what she's trying to accomplish here rather than just an institutional, commercial space with partitions and whatnot. Again, I really wish I had an architect here to testify this, but we're not asking for anything that's going to be unsafe. I mean, that's really contrary to what we're all about. So...
I'm going to give the public an opportunity to ask questions on testimony that's been given tonight, and anybody that didn't... any questions that weren't answered based on the testimony from the other night.
He summed up right. You're done with your application? You're not putting any more proofs in?
No, I mean, if the board believes that it requires the testimony of an architect together with a drawing of the existing floor plan to justify the numbers, we'd be happy to provide that. We're hoping we don't have to.
I don't think they have any choice. How can you ask the board to approve this use without setting a number of clients and instructors?
I believe that if it requires that, if you get a certification from the fire marshal identifying what... which cannot exceed...
The fire marshal, this is a special population. This is not just a office.
Can I ask a question? When you're saying, you know, how many people, how many clients, whatever, are you looking for me to tell you that we're going to have, like, if it says 18 a floor, nine clients and nine staff?
I don't think...
I'm just asking, or are we just... I'm just trying to clarify, are we asking that question or just how many people?
First of all, I think you need what...
The answer is yes and yes and yes. You said it was going to be one-on-one.
Yep.
Okay, so that's an easy number to figure out. Then we've got to look at the floor plan, whether, in fact, the architect simply took the gross floor area. It may not be that way.
Okay, I'm just... I just want to make sure I understand.
You also had people coming here and then going back.
Yeah, they won't be there all...
I couldn't... I'll be candid, I couldn't follow my note. It seemed like there was quite a few more people than what this led to.
What we have is, at any one time, we're not going to exceed whatever the number is, but that doesn't mean that's the only amount of clients I have because they come at different points. Some come 9 to 12. I may have, I don't know, 10 people. And 12 to 3, I may have four people, and then 3 to 5 or 4, 30, whatever it was, we may have all of them. So I just want to make sure I understand.
But what is needed is an architect or someone to say that based upon the size of this building, based upon the configuration, this is how many students can be there at a time. And then you've got to back in your teachers or your supervisors, and then that number would shrink down.
You must have laid out in your mind what you're going to use the space for.
Absolutely. That's what we provided to the architect, the floor plan and...
That's what you need to show us.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
These are just the measurements that... I think they're from the broker.
But I mean, if you're doing one-on-one, is there two chairs and a little coffee table? Is there a table where two people sit?
It's different in every room in each...
Yeah, but you have every room figured out as to what you want in it. So you need to have that drawn up, the way you plan it and show it to us so that we can then... and based upon that plan, you need to have the architect testify how many people can be in that space.
Okay.
Because there's testimony that you're going to teach life skills, making a bed. So obviously, one bed, one is going to be a bedroom.
Well, one, it's a blow-up bare mattress, and we de-blow it and use it for something else at the other point of day. So I'm just trying to understand, so I'm getting a clear picture.
Maybe it's probably on me. I mean, I misunderstood. I thought it was just...
So a lot of safety issues involved here.
That's fine.
This is a people in a two-story building. Is there a fire escape on the second floor or stairs coming out?
There's stairs, yeah, out of the second floor.
To the outside?
Yeah. Stairs go downstairs and out, and the stairs that go directly out.
Okay. Are we in the position to give the public a chance to ask questions? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, this is an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions of these witnesses, and I believe all the witnesses are here.
Yes.
Mr. McDonough's here. Okay, so if... I don't know how you... there's not that many people, you know, if you want to just do decide amongst yourselves who's going to go first or who's going to go second. But this is not the time to testify, okay? This is... I need questions. Everything has to be in the form of a question. And if you don't ask any question, I'm going to stop you in the tracks, okay?
Do you want to start with one witness? Have them all ask the questions, one, then go to the second, and then go to the third?
Fine.
Just to have that one witness up there and then...
Fine, fine. Do you want to start with the applicant, then?
I think so.
Are there any questions of the applicant? Any members of the public have questions of the applicant? Please come forward.
And sir, for the record, just state your name. And address.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Robert Assaro, 31 Philcrest Road, Parcypti, New Jersey. I'd like to get back to one question. You're in Denville now? Previously, you were in Dover. Now you're in Denville?
Yes.
I thought that application was disapproved and that you were working out of a church in Dover.
We were.
Okay, so now you're in Denville?
Correct.
And you had said you were going to be busing people in from Dover, so now...
We are still going to... the still plan is still to do that. We still can... we currently rent still from the facility in Dover, but for a different... we're using their parking lot and we are using their commercial kitchen at this time.
I think I heard tonight, too, that you're eliminating the half-circle drive in and out.
Correct.
And you're not expanding the parking lot?
Correct.
How many spaces currently can you park legitimately in that parking lot? Well, it's more like four, isn't it?
She just counted on...
I have pictures, if I can submit them?
Not at this time.
Not at this time? Okay. I'll submit them when it's appropriate time, but I have pictures that show...
There will be an appropriate time for you to present pictures. It's going to be once the applicant has finished their application, and then I'll ask members of the public if they'd like to speak in opposition or in support of. At that point, you can make... you can present testimony. But you have to understand something. You are not an ex... I'm assuming that you're not a trained expert in, say, traffic or planning or something like that.
No, I'm obviously visually impaired, but I can count the amount of cars legitimately parked in the driveway because it's pretty explanatory.
You like your opportunity in your presentation.
That's factual, you can testify.
Factually, you can testify.
Yes.
Just, Donna, can you just clarify, because I know you said squaring off and something about striping.
When she comes up, then you can go and answer the question.
Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize.
If you can't answer, just defer to her.
Okay, good. Sorry.
And what year was that building built in?
It's roughly 200 years old. I'm not quite sure.
1820, I believe. Is it 1820?
Off the top of my head, again, I don't know. I just know it's about 200 years old.
Yeah. It's a building on a real estate listing, says about 1820. How many square feet is the building?
Off the top of my head, I'm going to say 2,950 plus.
Real estate listing shows more like 1,000 feet of rooms, of livable space.
My camp...
It's testimony.
Yeah. You have to ask a question, I think, is what we're saying.
We've got a letter, the architect says, is 1,800 square feet each floor.
I'm just going by what does the real estate listing show?
So that's something, when it's your time to testify against, you could bring that in and submit that as evidence.
I don't have any more questions at this time.
Thank you. Any other members of the public have any questions for the applicant? Nope, no more questions for the applicant.
One more... this is the one witness, not the next witness. Who do you want?
Next witness is the architect?
Engineer.
I'm sorry.
Engineer.
Engineer, I apologize. Any members of the public have any questions for the engineer? No questions for the engineer.
Planner?
Excuse me?
I have a question for the engineer.
Okay, you've got to come back up and use the mics.
If you're the spokesperson for pretty much the group, you can stay up here. Are you going to be the spokesperson?
Yeah, to go back and forth, I guess.
And again, for the record...
In relationship to the last meeting, I thought that we were supposed to get engineering reports from the internal structure of the building, not only from an architect, but as far as a fire safety point of view. Has that been done?
Well, we provided...
I'm asking the engineer the question.
Yeah, but I'm going to answer that because you were asking about submission. We provided an architect's letter, but the board is strongly suggesting that we actually have an architect draw up floor plans and come in and testify as to those issues, and we intend to do that.
They asked that last meeting, did they not?
No, then there was a misunderstanding on my part, and I'll take that.
You are an attorney, right?
Yes, I am, sir.
And you represent people for variances, I assume, if you're doing a variance...
Yeah, you can't ask... you shouldn't...
You can't ask...
He's not like a witness, but yeah, you're correct.
You can't cross-examine the attorney.
But he is an attorney.
All right. Then you should be aware of what...
Well, he's not the... so just go to the engineer and start asking questions of the engineer.
Okay.
Sir, you started to talk about the number of parking spaces?
Yes.
Okay, so what we're doing is, is we are squaring off by adding portions of pavement around the existing asphalt driveway that's there, and we are re-striping it. And by re-striping it, there will be five parking spaces, one handicapped and four regular stalls, one for electric vehicles.
So you're adding, then, to the existing driveway?
No. We are adding corners of the pavement. For instance, I'm going to highlight an area where we're going to add pavement to square it off. And then I'm going to use another color to show you where we're going to remove it. So we're squaring it off. So the green is where we are adding pavement to conform with the 24-foot-wide access aisle for two-way traffic and the required 18-foot-deep parking stall and an eight-foot-wide, a nine-foot-wide parking stall, and the dimensions for the handicap are different. So that's a box off. So we're taking some asphalt away, we're boxing it off so that it complies with the ordinance for parking stall size and access aisle width.
And counsel, for the record, we're going to have to mark that A5 to colored, updated drawing showing where the pavement will be. So if it was earlier marked as A3, we're not going to mark it as A5, adding the...
What's the existing width?
I... do you have a scale?
Yep.
I forgot my scale. I will give you the existing width from the top portion, and then I'll give you the existing width where the handicapped accessway comes across, and that will be the overall distance that we are providing. So the width currently... or yes, the width... are you want... you want the current width right now?
Yes.
Okay, so the current width in the rear is 40 feet. The current width in the front is 36 feet. So we have to add less pavement to the right rear of the asphalt and increase the pavement width to add so that the uniform dimension of 32 feet is maintained.
So the existing square footage now is?
I can't calculate the square footage right now.
The new square footage will be?
The proposed square footage of the parking area excluding the access drive is 2,184 square feet.
Thank you. And based on the square footage of the house, which now I'm hearing it's 1,800, and based on the square footage that's required for parking, what would that be by town code?
The parking criteria?
But we didn't hear it was 1,800 because I think John said it was 1,800 on two floors. In the letter from the architect that was marked as A2, they're saying it's 1,800 per floor. So that's 3,600.
3,600.
So we don't know what the... Right? Well, we don't, and that's the problem with the letter. That's why we need the architect.
Should I rephrase my question, sir?
Well, it's not you, it's that we don't know what... we don't know what the square footage is. You're going to make...
So let's say based on 3,600, if that's what they said in the letter, by code, what does the town require for parking spaces?
The town does not have a standard for this use because it's a use that's not permitted in any of the zones. So the standard for... this can't be called a single-family or dwelling because it's not.
But it's... they're asking for use variances for business, right?
Yeah, and right now, as I said before, the 1,800 number is... can't be verified. So we can't start putting people in there based on any standard because we're starting with an unknown figure, unverified figure. And that's why I said we're spinning our wheels because we're not going to be able to get an answer. There is no standard for this particular use.
Okay.
It'll come up... if you recall the testimony, all the employees come in on butts, no clients come to the site individually, so there's the off-street parking needs are really banned and the couple people that come to the site. So that's what their needs would be.
But we don't know that either yet.
But we can't get... we can't get there.
Okay, I'll withdraw the question.
No, it's a question. It just doesn't have an answer.
Okay. I guess I can't ask the board questions at this point either, then, right?
No, we don't answer.
We don't answer questions. We don't know anything about the application.
Yeah.
Not more than.
Well, it was based on what, I was just trying to understand how it works.
With guard.
If it's a residence, if it's a resident, I assume there's no parking for, for an R3 and R2?
No, there is. Well, they could put a park, they could put a, let's say they had five people living there and all had cars, and they wanted to put a small parking thing on, as long as they met the coverage requirements and everything, or otherwise they'd have to come through variance.
Right, okay.
Where they wanted to put a three-car garage in the back, let's say, something like that. Again, they've got a coverage problem. There are times when, many, many times when we do driveways and things like that.
But if it was a business, would it require a certain amount of parking spots, like a school, or a deli, or something, will it require parking spots then?
Yes. And there is a schedule on that, right? Yeah. But right now, we don't know what that.
Yeah, no, I understand that, I understand, I'm not looking for a number. I just wanna understand the process. So basically, if someone is looking to put a business in our residential zone, right? You don't take in consideration what the rating of that business would be, and go back and work back into the numbers once you get the square footage and so on and so forth? And come up with a certain number of parking spaces required?
That's what you would do. But we get, we don't have the.
But once you do that, we would back into that number.
Like if it was a delicatessen, or if it was, you know, something like that.
Educational.
Or a professional office or something, small office building in a residential zone, there's all schedules for all that.
If I may, can I ask, what would they fall under? Would they fall under educational? Would they fall under medical? Would they fall under a B3, a B4?
I guess the issue is that, is that because we're asking for a use variance.
That microphone is muted.
And there is no schedule for this particular use. What the board is being asked to do, and what the board is tasked to do, is determine whether the parking demand that we're gonna be generating, can it be accommodated by the site? There isn't a number that we have to meet, but we have to satisfy this board that the parking that we're providing will fit the use and the property.
Based on.
There isn't anything like a restaurant, we have four spaces per table plus one for everyone. But Persipney hasn't created a schedule with that, that much particularity to identify this use. So it's a unique use, that's why we're asking for a use, sir.
From a land use standpoint, it's probably most akin to specialized education, because they're providing either training or life skills to an autistic population. It's not a school, it's training.
Training.
And there may be licensing requirements, too.
Well, she said there is now.
Well, that was, yeah.
Which is unbelievable.
They're working on it. They are working.
I don't wanna waste the board's time any longer, I wanna thank you.
Do you have one more witness, the planner?
Do you have any questions of the planner?
That's why I'm gonna get up.
You don't?
No.
Any other, anybody else have a question of the planner? Come on up.
Sir, you're new, so if you could state your name and address?
James Rivas, 20 Field Crest Road.
And how you spell your last name?
R.I.V.S. Invictor A.S.
Thank you.
Is there a plan on, you have a number of rooms in this house that you're going to?
Who are you asking the question to?
Please speak a little louder.
Pardon?
Please speak a little bit louder. Is the microphone on?
Is the green button, is it green?
Yes.
Okay, then it's on, speak into the microphone.
So you have a number of rooms in this house? Do you have any plans on how they're gonna be set up? Desks, tables, chairs?
That's what, that's what they're asking, even though I, like, kinda discussed how I was gonna utilize it, they're now asking to show that.
Detail plan, so that's gonna be coming?
Correct, that's part of the architect that they're asking.
All right, thank you. If there's any modifications or tear downs in that?
No, we're not doing anything to the house.
Okay.
Uh, there's.
Well, ma'am, you can't, he's got a question.
So there's just three bedrooms?
The way it's set up right now, there's, top of the stairs, there's one, at the back end, there's one. What used to be a bedroom, the previous people had converted it to like a living room, dining room upstairs, and then the downstairs rooms were offices at that time, so.
So we'll be seeing a plan on how this is all gonna be laid out?
Correct, that's what they're asking, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're new too, so name and address?
Alan Casper, 41 Field Crest Road.
Casper's?
Where the cat.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what was your name?
Alan L.B., L.B., as in boy, I.N., Casper with a cat, yes. I actually did, I stepped here last time.
What was your address?
41 Field Crest.
Thank you.
I just wanna re-ask this, because I didn't hear it said tonight, but your plan was originally to bring in individual clients, and now hypothetically speaking, say 18, and then you would have bust in your, your workers from Sateover or wherever. So there, that would be 20 vehicles coming and leaving at a, at a particular corner where, in the morning, it is, there's a lot of traffic there, as it is. And have you stood there at 8 o'clock in the morning, or 5 o'clock in the evening, and seen that traffic?
Uh, not only have I done that, I grew up in Persipney, so I'm well aware of that. We purposely stagger our, our people coming in, our adults. Some of our adults use transportation services where two or three could come in together, so it's not necessarily going to be, like you're saying, 20, like, all at once, or anything like that. So like, some of our students use like Dial-A-Ride, or they have transportation that they use in there. That gets them there. And the staff would be coming in like we said.
Okay. If you, if you, I heard Mr. McDonough say this actually last time, that you really liked the balance of residential and commercial in the area. Do you feel like you'd be offsetting that balance by bringing one more commercial entity to this region?
The answer is no, this is a, this is a special piece of property. It's already been found to be appropriate for non-residential use on the base floor. This is to expand the non-residential use, if you will, to the upper floor. It's also an R3 zone where you're allowed to have specialized housing, and we talked about this last time. People who will be coming here could actually live here, under the zoning. They're only coming here during the day. A community center could go here as well. R3 is not purely a single-family zone, it does allow for other things. And this particular site, given its size and given the structure of that beautiful building, does lend itself to other uses, adaptive reuse. And what I tried to show the board, we know Littleton Road very well, is dotted with these non-residential uses. It's a, it's a mix, it's a nicely co-mingled mix of residential and non-residential. And to put pure non-residential here, this socially beneficial use here, I think is a, is a good thing, it's a good fit. And it's not going to tip that balance, if you will, of the character of the area.
If you stay, and if we, you know, you know, feel that, feel that about the, the actual use of it, then maybe that's true. But if, have you considered if, say the business fails, I don't wish that upon you, but say the business fails, and variances, like taxes, tend to go in one direction, and usually not in the favor of residents. And, and I heard you say something of, like, you made some kind of remarks saying that it would be like a temporary sort of variance possibly, but I just, I find that hard to believe.
It's a really good concern, and if I, if I lived right next door, or lived around, I'd certainly have that concern about this opening a floodgate of anything, which it doesn't. This board always does a good job of putting a rope around the application, that's why there's all these questions with specificity about what's going where in there, so that they can tie relief, if relief is granted here, to specific properties and conditions and a specific use. Anything that changes would have to come back.
One of the baseline on this thing is, does this building still look like a house? When you go down the street, does it look like a house? And if they were altering this thing, I think they'd have a much harder burden. Right now, we're just trying to find out how much could fit in there, realistically. We've got a letter from an architect, and he says 18 to the floor. Well, this, this piece of property's been in front of this board third time?
I'll pay.
At least. At least. And so we kinda got a familiarity of what it is. We're still, as I said a half hour ago, we're missing the first piece of information we need to go.
We're missing the horse.
Does that answer make it a little less painful for you?
I mean, the landscape, we saw this stuff the first time tonight, and, you know.
I, I, I mean, I don't wanna, I, I am, you know, empathetic for what you're trying to do, but it's, in, at the end of the day, it's still a business. And that, that part of this does not make me feel comfortable. And it's, it's literally, I look out my backyard, it's to the left. I, I, I don't particularly feel comfortable with it.
Okay.
And I, I don't know if this'll help at all, is the one, if I lived next door, the benefit for me is, you never know who's gonna, if they buy it residential, you never know who's gonna move in, or what they're gonna do. You could have, sorry, but you could have teenagers who have parties at night, or whatever. We're not gonna be there at night, we're not gonna be there on the weekend, so it's, we're kind of like really quiet neighbors otherwise. So that's just something to keep in mind, and I don't know if that'll help at all, but I just, you know, wanted to put that out there. So, and we're gonna use the home kind of like as a home. So if we're outside, we're outside to play cornhole, or to play, you know, to teach them volleyball, or to have a picnic. Those kind of things that you would see in a typical family residential. We're not out there to have a, you know, a big flea market, or sale, or anything like that. So I don't know if that helps, you know, if they're outside, they're gonna be sitting on the porch and reading. And when we're inside, we're doing those kind of things that you would typically do in a home, but without all the, you know, with the help that we're doing. So I don't know if that helps the neighbors at all, but I just, just wanted to put that.
I, I would like to bring up something that, well, basically repeat what was said last time, and that was, that I had asked if you would be interested in taking a house next to that, and then a house next to that, and seeking variances to expand your business. You said yes, whatever you would, what you could do to expand your business, and I.
Those would stay in that same thing, I'm not looking to do that, and I understand where you're coming from.
You know, do it there, too?
Ladies and gentlemen, we're way off topic, okay, way off, okay?
I know, it's dirty.
Let's not, let's not talk about, you know, the pie in the sky things we might wanna do. We're talking about a variance on this particular property here. And you will have an opportunity to express your opinion at a later date, okay? Right now, I wanna, I wanna finish up the questions. Is there any more questions of any of these witnesses?
I'm sorry, I forgot your name, sir, I remember you from St. Clair's.
Unless you wanna be formal, but it's John.
Yeah, and I can't see you that far away, anyway.
I'll get closer.
That's all right, you don't need to, you better walk that way. You had said that it was a mixed use along 202. But in that particular area, which is called the Field Crest area, which I'm sure you're familiar with, because that's what they called it, and you were from town. What's the immediate zoning there?
It's the R3 zone.
And R1, too, I believe, right?
I'd have to go back and look where R1 and R3.
The other side of the street.
The other side of the road. Are you aware how the zoning runs on the two ends of 202, where you talked about there is mixed use? Are you aware that it changes? It's not an R1, an R3 zone?
I'd have to look at the zone map.
It's a business zone. Or is it a business zone, I'm sorry, it's supposed to be a question. Is it a business zone on both ends? I believe it's two different ends where the zoning actually does change.
What part of, I'm not.
202, where you kind of, where the businesses start coming more mixed on both ends, we're in the middle. So if you're going south, there's one way.
Down towards the, talking about as you get closer to 80?
To Serbos, yes.
Yeah, okay, that's a totally, I wasn't relying upon what's going on by Serbos as part of my conclusion that.
On the other side of 80, closer.
The exhibit that I gave the board was specific to this area, as you're heading towards the hills.
And there's not really that much mixed use, is there? In that specific area?
There's a whole bunch shown in the master plan, I gave the board that.
What streets are you going to, sir?
On Littleton Road, there's doctor's offices, there's Century 21.
How far down south are you going?
How far south am I going?
Counting these doctor's offices and what you're seeing?
South of the site, you've got a, you've got the church, you've got banjoalas, you've got the gas station, you've got a, you've got a mixed bag.
A multifamily going in.
That's going the opposite, then, that's where the zoning changes, Bob.
Right next to the gas station, we got a multifamily going in.
Don't I know it, yours truly. The, the building is now down.
The house is down.
Yeah, they took it down, that's correct.
Finally.
Yeah, and they were existing, I believe, too, before the zoning was done. So that, that, they really wouldn't count, would they?
The point I'm trying to make is that.
I'm just asking a question, would they count?
I don't follow the question.
If it's pre-existing and it was there before the zoning was done, would that be considered?
As a planner, we consider the established pattern of the neighborhood, of the corridor, in rendering our conclusions. Not only the condition of the property, but the context. And all I'm saying is Littleton Road is dotted with non-residential uses. That's a fact.
It is, it's mixed in some areas, but it's people that live there. I think there's a dog groomer on 202 that lives there.
There could be home occupations there.
Yeah, that's basically, most of them are.
I don't think.
That was, that was a variance application. That was a deep, that was a use variance.
Yep.
That dog groomer.
Yep, and she lives there, right?
Well, you just get, just ask questions, you know, what you guys are, you're starting to have your own sidebar conversation.
Okay, sorry. Well, my point is, I believe that the two ends, where most of the commercial stuff is, in the middle, it's zoned R3 and R1. When is that master plan done, what year?
2020.
Why did the town do the master plan?
What is this pertaining to, what we're at?
Why does a town do a master plan?
Well, there's two reasons. Number one, it's a statutory obligation to update your master plan on a regular basis, so that's why they did it. And also to establish land use policy. That becomes your zoning ordinance.
Okay, is it a guide for public officials to use when making decisions?
It's, it's more than a guide, it's got teeth, it is underlying land use policy.
Okay.
Nora, when can we carry this case to?
November 8.
There's no, no one else has any questions, correct?
We're, we're cutting off questions, it's almost five minutes to 10.
Well, do you wanna just?
Just keep the public comments open. I didn't say stop that. November 8, without.
You're gonna be able to come back.
Without, without further notice, and you'll give us extensions?
Absolutely, Chairman, the question I have is if the question of my experts is done, Mary Jo will come back, obviously, because I'm gonna have another expert there, my architect.
Yeah.
But if there's no party questions for Ms. Bullock or Mr. McDonough, I haven't asked them, they'd be excused.
Well, you can excuse them, but if there's a question that needs to be answered, then the burden's gonna be on you. I mean, I have no problem with that. One thing you gotta understand is we've gotta see detailed floor plans of what's gonna happen. We're not gonna, you know.
We're gonna get that. We're gonna get that.
Can we get these a little later?
We're gonna get a few in advance, we are. So Donna and Dr. Supers here?
Yeah.
Thanks. You've got to take, take top of the signs. The sign, Mr. Supers.
Did you look at the sign, jury? You didn't look at the sign, too?
Yes. So you're gonna have a comment on that?
John has to look at the sign part of there. John has to go through over the signs because he did not see them prior to tonight.
So our professionals are gonna have to review everything that was submitted tonight? Because usually...
You gotta read through the signs, nobody's got it in the street.
I'm sorry?
Nobody else down the block, long the way, there's no sign in the street, and that's just about where that was. Even though it's tiny.
Well, he's gonna review it.
Let's not do it now.
Motion to carry this case to November 8 without further notice?
Second amendment.
Whatever extensions are required. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any other business?
If, in the, if a slot opens up between now and today, we'd be more than happy to be noticed and notify everybody if it needed, if that, if that happened.
I think half, half of Precipiny would have to fall into the ocean.
And next week is at the high school.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
For the board, next week is at the high school.
We're at the high school, Precipiny. We have a big show next week, Precipiny Hills High School.
You could go to the right high school. You're out of it.
Yeah. Alright, we're good to go, Chairman? Not doing anything next Wednesday night, come on over to Precipiny Hills High School, it's gonna be a show.
Right, we all adjourned, right?